Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're now back in session. Council Bill 23-0381, ordinance of estimates for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. I'm Eric Costello, councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined, going down the left, Councilwoman Dani McCray, Second District Vice Chair of the Committee; Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District Member of the Committee; Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District; Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee; and Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District Member of the Committee. Consistent with what we did last evening, colleagues, we're going to do a one-question rule so that we can move through this very quickly. I know we have a lot of questions for DOT. They're doing a lot of work in a number of different areas in each of our districts throughout the city. I'm going to ask that, our colleagues keep your questions very succinct, refrain from speeches. If we get to that point, I'm going to politely nudge you and then politely interrupt you to finalize your question. Director, I'm going to ask that you and your team be succinct in your answers as well. How many slides do we have? We got 16? I say that's good enough for government. So, Director, what we're going to do, I'm going to turn it over to you in a moment. I'm going to have you introduce all the senior members of your team that are sitting at these chairs up here that are testifying. If someone else needs to testify who's not sitting at one of these chairs, we'll have them come up to the lectern. Folks, you're going to see these new microphones that look like they're from the 21st century in front of you. Huge upgrade for council chambers. You're going to see two buttons on the bottom. If everyone could just practice with me real quickly, there's an icon on the right that looks like a person. If everyone could just press that. Yeah, we got too many people hooked up, but you notice how the ring up here gets red? That means your mic is on. Ma'am, if you could, yup, perfect. When you're speaking, please turn it on. When you've finished speaking, please turn it off. These microphones are extremely sensitive and they will catch everything from a breath to a sniffle. Everyone good? Okay. Director, how much time do you anticipate needing for your presentation?
It'll be short, about 20 minutes or so.
20 minutes, okay, outstanding. We've also been joined by City Administrator Faith Leach, Assistant Deputy Administrator Alan Robinson, and we have representatives from Mayor Brandon Scott, as well as Council President Nick Mosby's office, and the person in charge is sitting to my immediate right, Marguerite Curran, staff to the committee. With that, Director, I'll turn it over to you. Please introduce your staff, full name and position, title, and then jump right in on the presentation, please.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Costello and members of the City Council. I am Corinne Johnson, Intern Director for Baltimore City Department of Transportation. So with me today, I have Liam Davis, Legislative Affairs Manager, Tavon Braxton, Deputy Director for Operations, Theo N'Gongong, Deputy Director for Planning and Chief of Policy, Tish Gardner, who is the Deputy Director of Administration, Will Haynes, Chief of the Traffic Division, Bimo Dufkota, Chief of Tech, Kendall Abu-Hukim, Chief of Maintenance, Adam Cloud, Chief of Right-of-Way, Nick Fontanaz, HR Manager, Valerie LaCour, our ADA Division Chief, and many other DOT representatives in the back rows. So, though this is my first time leading DOT here at a hearing in this official role here as the Agency Director, as you may recall, of course, it's not my first time being here because I was here in last year's cycle, so I was glad to see you all here again. But objects aside, the experience serves as a metaphor of this critical department that serves the people of Baltimore every day. Our team is tasked with solving problems and challenges on a daily, sometimes hourly or down-to-the-minute basis, and I am proud to oversee a team of public servants who are committed to delivering for the city of Baltimore. Looking ahead to fiscal year '24, we remain committed to maintaining and improving the city's transportation infrastructure to provide a safe, reliable, accessible, and efficient system for all. Though each municipal agency provides critical services to Baltimore, very few impact our residents to the degree that BCDOT does. We are responsible for virtually all right-of-way infrastructure visible to the public and some that's unseen, from curbs to roadways, bridges, and medians, and much more. In other words, the second a resident departs their home, they're likely going to interact with public space that is in our portfolio. I want to assure each of you that under my leadership and the leadership of the Scott Administration, we are continuing to build an agency designed to fully leverage the bipartisan infrastructure bill and implement complete streets across Baltimore. During my tenure as Intern Director, DOT has prioritized hiring and staffing up the agency, which is representative in our great strides to fully staff the planning division with experienced, talented, and professional staff. In fact, here around the November timeframe, we experienced a lot of turnover, and I'm proud to say that we recently had the hiring of a new capital planning chief who wished to be here today, but he is off celebrating a graduation today, a new share mobility coordinator, and offer letters to a new city planner, a new bike planner, a transit administrator, and an administrative analyst. I am fully committed to infusing equity in both BCDOT's operational and capital budget programs, but also greatly value equity in our workforce. Eighty percent of our senior staff are now white, and 40% are female. We understand and we hear very clearly the desire from members of this body and from the citizens that you all represent to modernize the city's aging infrastructure, implement traffic calming, and upgrade our public right-of-way to be safe and accessible. And though there is much work ahead of us, I do want to share some key accomplishments for the fiscal year '23. First and foremost, we were successful in applying for a $2 million reconnecting communities grant from US DOT. The grant funding will support DOT's West Baltimore United Planning Study and will take an inclusive approach with community stakeholders to right past wrongs by reimagining the West Baltimore Route 40, commonly referred to as the Highway to Nowhere. In February, we were notified that our application to US DOT's Safe Streets for All Grant Program was successful and will be receiving approximately $1 million to expand recently completed strategic highway safety plan into a more comprehensive safety action plan. We successfully applied to US DOT's FTA ferry program and received roughly $5 million to replace the city's existing inner harbor connector fleet with new hybrid electric vehicles. During DOT's calendar year '22 construction, the agency broke a previous record of roughly 120 speed-hump installations by installing 160 throughout Baltimore. The Traffic Division was awarded a $3.2 million Highway Safety Improvement Program grant in November '22, and design is underway for pedestrian safety improvements at 16 locations. And in May of this year, grant application was submitted for an additional $2 million. And our citywide traffic signal optimization project is underway as of March '23, and it will use a complete-street approach, including reducing speeds via signal timing, improving access for side streets, pedestrians, and cyclists, and this is a three-year project. We continue to be a national leader when it comes to automated traffic enforcement. The 83-speed camera program began issuing citations in July '22, and though the data is still preliminary, initial review indicates that the cameras have had a significant positive impact in terms of reducing prevailing speeds along the roadway. We are actively working with partner agencies, including M.MTA, preparing for the implementation of the automated bus lane enforcement, and the cameras are expected to be installed during fiscal year '25. We are working on adopting a curbside commercial policy, providing opportunities to businesses to expand operations within the abutting parking lanes. We've had a very robust public engagement, public comment period with that effort. And in fact, today, DOT is going to be submitting a grant application to MDOT for their Maryland Bikeways Program. DOT is seeking to advance plans for the critical Boston Street Connector portion of the Greenway Trails Project from 30% to 100% design. So we will be committing $119,000 in local dollars, hoping to yield another $476,000 for a total project of just under $600,000. Combined with pending step increases of the city's annual highway user revenue allocation, our staffing, grant, legislative, and policy efforts are collectively working in tandem with the bipartisan infrastructure bill to help the agency turn this page when it comes to the city's extensive network of transportation services and assets. And while we are making significant strides, I do want to highlight ongoing challenges that are actively impacting DOT. We, of course, continue to see a spike in the annual number of traffic calming requests. During calendar year '18, we received less than 600. Last year, that number had grown to over 1,400 individual requests, and this year we're on pace to receive over 1,700 individual requests. Though there have been warnings of pending recession, the labor market remains tight. DOT is actively working with the administration to hire key positions and applauds city leadership for initiating the $10,000 hiring bonus for CDL drivers, both those new and those existing within our agency. Though stabilizing, elevated rates of inflation from the past year have led to higher material costs, further increase in the cost of critical capital projects. Though the agency is taking steps to improve our ability to implement more projects on a shorter timeline, such as our traffic calming efforts, the fact remains that transformational capital projects take a considerable amount of time. This is particularly true of larger projects that utilize federal dollars, and the reality is not unique to DOT, but observed at transportation agencies throughout the United States. But despite these ongoing challenges, we continue to make significant measurable strides at BCDOT. I and my amazing team that are here with me today and beyond are committed to delivering on the service needs of Baltimoreans, and I appreciate the relationships that have been developed between myself and you all and your staff. And I thank you for providing my team and I the opportunity to discuss our proposed fiscal year '24 budget with you. So I would now get into the actual slides. All right. So I kind of touched on this already in my opening address, that we are focused on safety, accessibility, reliable, efficient systems for all modes of transportation. And by doing so, we want to support and create livable and vibrant communities for all Baltimoreans. And so, our fiscal year '24 goals is to create operational, promote operational excellence by attracting, developing, retaining a talented, diverse, and engaged workforce, and to also look for ways of increasing efficiency. And so that's going to come about through process improvements, technology enhancements, and further innovations. This is just the overall structure of the agency and the different service areas. All right. So, street lighting. This is, of course, is a maintenance function, and this budget service covers over 79,000 streetlights. Much of our efforts are to upgrade to LED. We have adages that are based on the different call service requests that we receive. Of course, whenever we do experience cable faults, that leads to longer repair times. And then we also are working in tandem with Office of Communities, police, and others to identify areas where we might need to install additional lighting to help to deter crime. For conduits, obviously, we know there are some changes with conduits, so not too much to say there. I think you all really well versed on that. But, yeah, I know, I know. So I'm just going to keep on going on that slide. All right. Really, the administration is just a support to all of the DOT divisions when it comes to these different areas. So with street management, we are working on adding, we're adding in complete streets, ADA potential traffic calming, those type of aspects. We are maintaining the current level of service. And so, of course, there's some increase in there for the inflationary cost increases as well. So this, of course, is just, as shown there, it includes a transfer of one position to OIT for the optimization. Also, we are continuing to work on efforts for TMZ improvements. For the inner harbor services, we have, Sector 3 has masons, we have three masons, we have people from the streetlight section, and so we're trying to continue to maintain the current level of service for that service item. All right, so, again, maintaining the current level of service. Thankfully, we didn't have as impactful of a season this past winter, so it let us be a little more productive as an agency with the positive weather. Vehicle, excuse me, vehicle impounding. So this, of course, includes funding to begin leasing a new towing facility and increased funding for private security at our tow yards. No changes here, maintaining the current level. Again, just trying to focus on equity, of course, with our sustainable transportation efforts. We are trying to address any needs from a transit standpoint and to create access for community members. Again, this maintains the current level of service. The output really, you know, we have a lot of the in-house crews that are working on that, and so the effectiveness is based on any type of contract crews. No change here. With this, we do some with maintenance and some bridge contractors. Of course, when we have a good contract, we can do more repairs, and the bridge efficiency rating is based on inspections completed and those ratings, and so that helps to lead our overall structures program also. Parking enforcement, again, there was a change here from IT optimization standpoint, but aside from that, not much change in this area. Survey control. We have a very small team that does surveys, but no major changes there. Dockmaster is shown here to maintain the current level of service, but we are working on doing some research and trying to revamp the entire program to find a way of this becoming a more robust program, kind of like in the city of Annapolis. Street cuts, this, again, maintains the current level of service. The team has been very active, however. The small team that we do have, they're very active in inspecting the work that's out there and issuing fines, and we're finding in some cases where we're spending more time per inspection location, but that's just because of how the diligence of our team members. So for the traffic safety, as shown, it includes $15.5 million to operate the city's network of traffic cameras and $13.3 million for the vendor to contract to maintain the cameras, assuming that 69 cameras will be redeployed in '24. This team handles all alley, street closure, easement type of processes, so it's, again, a small team, but very efficient or very needed function for the city. Okay, gotcha. I was expecting it to like get to that point. All right, so, thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. So that concludes our slides and our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District Member of the Committee, as well as Councilwoman Porter, 10th District. Director, thank you for the presentation and to the entire team that's joined us this afternoon. I wanted to first talk about an issue that we raised in our letter to CAO Leach in advance of the hearing, and that's, generally speaking, traffic calming. As you know, there is a strong desire for traffic calming across every single neighborhood in the city. You've heard it from the Council President, as well as every single member of the City Council. I know that your team is doing the very best that they can to keep up with the requests, but the unfortunate reality is that the demand outweighs the resources exponentially. Hoping you could speak a little bit to that situation.
Definitely, glad to. So, it really is a holistic approach. We understand the desires, the need for traffic calming. As an engineer, at heart is, it goes in my head, that safety is top priority, and that's safety for everybody. And so, as I did speak on it, we did increase, we have increased, the number of speed pumps that we've done in the past. We're continuing to drive that up. We're, the team is taking action to not only just look at maybe just the requests that are coming in, but also trying to take that equity approach and look and see some of those areas where they're seeing other speeding concerns and things as well, to identify those areas and more proactively try to work on making some improvements. Additionally, we're working on becoming more efficient in how we're going about analyzing the traffic calming requests. So instead of getting each individual server request coming in, sending someone out there, traffic investigator out there to investigate that one request, we're now looking at it from more of a community approach. And so that means that if in a certain block radius, we have, you know, 20 requests potentially, or we can go and look and see what's happening in the other roads, then we're looking at to see in that general area what is needed to help calm traffic. Because we recognize if we come and do some improvements on one roadway, that might just push the issue somewhere else. So, by taking that approach and trying to assign them in a more packaged way, then we're able to, one, knock out more server requests with that one investigator going out there and being efficient with their time and resources, but we're also trying to make greater community impacts. We, let me look through. So, for example, with the, just looking at speed-hump projects, not specifically the individual ones, in '21, we completed 28 projects. In '22, we did 43. Now, for '23, we've completed 24, but we have another 53 that are pending. So that shows that for '23, our projection is to complete about 85 speed-hump type of locations. So there might be multiple humps within a certain area. So that's a huge improvement in our production. Additionally, as far as traffic calming, just to give you an idea, in '21, we had, calendar year '21, we had about 1,400 service requests. '22 was 1,413. '23, we look like we're going to have about 1,750, and most likely '24 is going to be easier, around 1,800 traffic calming requests. So, we're constantly analyzing it. We're using our internal operations stat meetings to try to drill into it and come up with more ways of trying to address these concerns. And then additionally, glad to say, I announced today that we're trying to do things that make sense in alignment of our staff and their skill sets. So our engineering supervisor, Cleo Baumhofer, who, whose engineers would be working on some of the complete-street efforts, but they're directly dealing with the traffic calming and those type of requests that are coming in from all of you all, we've integrated her role with the complete-street manager. And so by doing that, it's not going to be a little bit separate priority here, it's going to be her priority, not only to address the traffic calming, the safety, but also make sure the complete-street is infused in there as well. So, in addition to that, we're continuing our recruiting efforts with the recent Career Fair at the War Memorial Building. Our traffic investigators, traffic transportation associates, some of those positions were on that list. And so overall, and I can get to a little bit more when we get to hiring, I guess, but overall, for the different positions we've been recruiting for, from that event, there are 73 active hiring processes going on. So we found certain candidates, we're working on trying to make offers and trying to fill some holes within the agency.
Thank you, Director. We're going to go to Vice Chairman McCray, then Stokes, then Dorsey. And colleagues, we're sticking to the one-question rule. Please be succinct with your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. A critical focus for me is our city's middle neighborhoods and the construction of a comprehensive strategy focused on the preservation of standing infrastructure, increased capital investment, and most importantly, retaining our longstanding middle-class families, many of whom are legacy Black residents. This tech list that was released to us last night, it does not assist in doing so. And the infusion of equity that was spoken about during your presentation is not in here, because the 2nd district out of all the council districts is not included in this list, out of 14 other districts. Director, can you speak to why the 2nd district out of 14 districts, they're all included? District 1 gets 17%, District 3, 10%, District 4, 2%, District 5, 3%, District 6 and 7, they're getting 8.3%, 6 and 8, and also included, 7, 9, 10. They make up this chart, this pie chart. District 2, 0%. Can you speak to why the 2nd district, my district, is not included on the tech list?
So, the one thing about this list, and this is the orange cone resurfacing list, and it includes both the internal resurfacing and the external resurfacing completed by the Tech Division. So, it includes locations that are remaining from calendar year '22, and then the calendar year '23 locations. So, the ones at the top of the list that make the most, the majority of the tech list are from '22. So those are the ones that were remaining. I can't speak to the details of how those got selected, but then for the '23, there are, one, two, three, four, seven. There are seven locations on the list. With the external resurfacing, just because of the magnitude of the work, when they're initially looking at it, they're looking at major arterials, gateways, roadway construction, I mean roadway conditions, things like that, and the pavement assessments for those type of areas. And it is very much tied to the funding. I know that for '23, the resurfacing funding was cut in that year. And so, we are taking an approach at delivering projects from an equity standpoint. It was just with the money that we had, we couldn't do a project for every single district with the fiscal year '23 funding.
But yet, there are 13 other districts.
So, if I can jump in, Director, I just want to, just to give some details provided by Tech Division, putting some perspective of our resurfacing budget for tech projects. So there's a bucket of money, and it's split up into sectors. There's four sectors. Each sector gets an equal amount of money. In FY '21, each sector got $2.5 million. In FY '22, that went down to $2.25 million. In FY '23, which is what we're looking at with this orange cone list, it dropped from $2.25 million per sector to $1.2 million per sector. So there's four sectors, each has $1.2 million, and that's just really challenging for tech to spread that around. That being said, Councilwoman, we hear you loud and clear, and your concerns have been communicated to our division, and our hope is to do a better job moving forward.
Well, one thing I would like to also add in is that in this year's budget process, Department of Planning did recommend that DOT receive some ARPA dollars as a, in conjunction with the fiscal year '24 budget. So it stands, it was recommended to be $10 million to go towards resurfacing. We went through, we had some new contracts that are going to be coming out. We worked on doing addendums to include necessary ARPA language in those contracts to try to help with that procurement process that we deal with, so that we can try to work on looking and evaluating locations and see what we're able to do, and then try to more quickly deliver on that. So, with that in mind, what I've already been talking to the team about is recognizing that we were limited in the fiscal year '23, and to look at it and see, okay, what areas exist, what are those roadways we need to try to put some focus on, and see if we can capture anything as part of that additional funding that would be coming.
So this is not a question, and, Mr. Chair, I'm going to try to be as brief as I can. While I hear you on the ARPA dollars, DC is undergoing their own budget negotiations, and what's on the table is that unspent ARPA dollars may have to be returned. Those ARPA dollars are not guaranteed. What I feel, when this list was created, is that somebody's plan in my constituents' face, there is no reason this is not equitable, and I'm not standing for it. So I see our finance person here, I don't- So I see our finance person here, I don't know where our city administrator went. But I want to make sure that District Two gets the same resources this paving season because, as Ryan, Councilman Ryan Dorsey mentioned within that DHR hearing, we just got this list halfway through the paving season. Mr. Chair, I do have a request. I want a cost for how much it would be to resurface the 400 block of South Eaton Street within Hollentown, the 3,800 block of Deckard's Lane within Taylor Heights. I want to know how much it's going to cost to repave Bel Air Road from the county line to White Avenue, the 5,400 block of Hilltop Avenue, and a 4,200 block of Nicholas Avenue. Because I don't know what's happening when a tech division is pulling these 3-1-1s, but these are longstanding from before I've been here, and they deserve some tech projects too. Thank you so much to my colleagues for your patience and for allowing me this time, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Nate, I'm going to ask the Councilwoman to email that list over to you, just to make sure we got the exact list. Councilman Stokes?
Real quick.
Oh, hang, hang on one second, Councilman Stokes. Director, what's a, what's a reasonable timeframe that you can think, that you believe you can get that list together? Because I suspect the Councilwoman's going to want it by this upcoming Tuesday.
Mr. Chair, I have five locations, is that right?
Yes. I, I think what the Councilwoman is saying is she'd like that cost estimate provided to the council by no later than Tuesday, June 5th, or Tuesday, June 6th, excuse me. Tuesday, June 6th.
We'll all know that.
Okay. And that's curb to curb, Councilwoman, curb to curb. Thank you.
The, the one thing just to point out is it wouldn't necessarily just be resurfacing, especially like referencing like the Bel Air route and things like that. So it was, it would be, if we're going to do Tuesday, it's going to be very rough because we also have to consider the ADA, any storm drain work, any, the Complete Streets traffic calming, any of those other things that have to go into it as well. So, yeah.
We can do rough. I just need an estimate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stokes, and then Councilman Dorsey.
Director Johnson, I want to, Kendall, Ms. Galloway, Frank, Liam, thank you. I know a lot of issues is in my district, y'all been responsible, but I just want to mention from Miami Street and Broadway to North Avenue and Broadway, those trees don't get trimmed. That is the gateway to North Avenue, gateway to Fells Point down Broadway. It look a mess. It look a mess. I had to get the city, Kendall and Ms. Galloway, to cut the grass, because I'm going to say it, Lorenzo not doing a job. They don't cut the grass, they leave the trash. One of the guys was cutting the grass, there was a tree limb with dead limbs, and he told me he wasn't going to clean it up. He ain't had to clean it up. I says, unbelievable, that he was not going to get the trash. They cut the trash that's in the grass, they don't even care. But when you get near John Hopkins, it's a different cut, it's a different clean, and people in East Baltimore deserve the same kind of service that the way they cut that trash, or cut that grass near Hopkins, after you get past Miami Street, they don't even care. First of all, I want to thank DOT for putting that ramp at Preston and Broadway, because I watch women go across those pipes with baby carriages trying to get across the street. That is awful. I'm asking now at Biddle and Broadway, I know you can't put it in Middle Street, but that ramp can be going east and west, so the people at Biddle and Broadway can get across the street. Because right now, you put the handicap ramps in, but all you got to do is, the ramp that's at Preston and Broadway is going north and south. Put one at Biddle and Broadway, go east and west, so people can get across the street. That is awful, that people got to climb. I watched the, the mail lady in 1,100 block of Broadway climb across those pipes to deliver mail. She's going to get hurt. The gentleman that lived 1107 North Broadway, city been working with him, but he smelled that sewage in his house every day. He can't even bring his mother out of the house because the pipes been there, I understand, for seven months. I had to get parked, I thought they'd give him a parking pass, because they can't park in front of their door, but he was getting a ticket from the city. That gentleman that lived 1107 is so frustrated. When you ride down some parts of Broadway right now, the smell of sewage is awful. But guess what? It's in his house. Those pipes are still laying in front of his door. We have to do something to remove that pipe so that man have access to his house. He can't even come out the house, he got to go out the back door. But in his house, raw sewage smell every day, that is awful. And I know the city been working with me, but we have to help that gentleman, gentleman at 1107 North Broadway. Thank you.
Councilman, you have a specific document?
Well, they, they been working with him at 1107, but the pipes are still there. I don't know what we have to do, we had the engineer there. But it's so frustrating for him, but it's frustrating for me because he can't come out his house, but he's talking about the smell that's in his house. I mean, we got to do something, he should not be living like that. Who want to smell raw sewage anyhow? So I'm talking about the engineer, need to meet me back there with that gentleman who lived 1107. We need to do something about them pipes in front of his door. Eight months. The pipe's been in the medium strip for nine months, and people feel like nothing's happening. But when you live in front of a 1107 and you can't come out, he can't even bring his mother over his house. But if you ever go in his house and smelling up raw sewage, I wouldn't want to live there either. So I'm, my request is, the engineers come back out to 1107, and we got to find out how we're going to detach those pipes, because that's unfortunate that he got to live like that.
Thank you, Councilman Director. Or any re-
Good afternoon, Councilman. Thank you for your support and awareness of the issues along the Broadway corridor. As you know, that project is a DPW project. Our engineers are in no way involved. However, we have come out to deal with many of the traffic issues throughout the course of that project. I have been in contact with the project manager from DPW. There is a serious issue with them not being able to move those pipes. I think that that's a conversation we can definitely take offline and go back to DPW with. I know that we've made the accommodations that we can make as a department to help those residents along the corridor.
But additionally, I'll add, if there are any concerns about pedestrian movements, accessing it, any of those ramp concerns, any of those details, we'll take note of that, and I'll have Valerie and the ADA team take a look at that and see if there's some type of, something, see if something we can work out for-
Can you make sure I get an email so I can?
Sure.
Be there. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Director, and everybody here who is immensely supportive from DOT. And again, congratulations to Kendall on our Ladensky Award. I want to ask about bikeways grants. Kind of multifaceted here. The $360,000 Baltimore Greenway Trail Northern Segment, Northern Segments Maryland Bikeways Grant was awarded in FY 2020, and to my knowledge, has no additional grant extensions available. Based on the grant timeline, my understanding is DOT has received an award expiration notice and is subject to losing reimbursement of that grant. I could be wrong. I'd love to be told otherwise, but we do have a problem of fulfilling grant obligations within the time, within the time allotted by the grant, kind of repeatedly, and this puts us in jeopardy, I think, of seeking more grants in the future. It's also my understanding that the bikeways grants applications for this year are due today, and that we're only applying for one, whereas last year, there were fewer applications made to the state than money they had to award, so they couldn't even give away all the money that they had. Had we made more applications last year, we would have had almost a guarantee to be granted that money. And then again this year, tell me if I'm wrong, but you know, to my knowledge, we're only applying for one grant, when we have plenty of places through an iterative process in the city where we could easily be hardening existing things. Nobody here loves flex posts and paint as a solution. There's any number of projects where we could be replacing paint and flex posts with hardening measures that, there's money on the table to be applying for this. If we're not applying for it, you know, what are we doing? Can you tell me what's going on with bikeways grants?
Sure. So, so to your first question is no, we're not in jeopardy of losing the grant. We have been in diligent conversations with MDOT. We have gone over with them the efforts with the grant thus far, and they've determined that we have met the necessary requirements for it. So we're working with them on submitting and kind of starting that closeout process to submit for reimbursements and things like that. So we're, we're good on that sense. We're not losing any money, there's nothing getting taken back, or going to be unreimbursable for us.
Is, is that the same for, are we on the right path for Wolf Washington and for the bike counters and other things that we have to seek reimbursement for? Are we on the right trajectory for these things?
I, I believe so. I knew of that one specifically, just because that date, that deadline was so looming, but Theo can speak to a little more as far as our bike program and the grant efforts there.
Thank you, Director. Councilman Dorsey, appreciate the question about capacity, yet the question about spending the actual dollars that we're receiving. So part of what we originally did at DOT was hiring a grant manager, because we did not have that before. So we needed somebody who would oversee what we do in terms of identifying the grants that we think we're going to go after, then applying to them, then managing them in terms of making sure that administratively, we're not losing any money on the, so that is one step. The second step, of course, we were dealing with staff capacity. We are now ramped up the process of replacing the bike planners that we've lost over the past five months, and then we're moving forward with an active set of conversation with MDOT. So most of the grants that we've applied for in the past are moderated by MDOT, literally on a day-by-day basis. When we are close to not meeting our goals, they are letting us know ahead of time. So both the, the grant for, like the Director stated, for the Northern Segment of the Greenway Network Trail, and the other grants are on track. The closeout is just a matter of saying that the money that you're seeking will be reimbursed if you guys are providing the necessary paperwork. So it's an administrative process, and it is in the works.
And so to the point about not applying for more, there's money on the table.
So, so we, we are, applying for, seeking and getting grants is a priority of ours. I mean, we, we've been doing that, but it also would be recognizing that, what was it, around November timeframe, the division took a hard hit, the, the planning division and those that are, they're handling all of this. So kind of what he was referencing, we, was four weeks into us, our new planning chief. We've got the, the new planners, everyone that's coming on board. So while we have staff, we've hired some consultants to have to try to help us in managing things in this transition time, if we went after too much, and then like you referenced, if we potentially didn't deliver on it, couldn't handle the, the amount of the grants, if we weren't awarded them, then that would do a disservice and do a damage to us as well. So we're going after ones and making sure that we're confident that we can run with it, manage it, and properly deliver on that grant. So with us staffing up, we're in a much better place, and, and we're actively going after any, you know, any and every type of grant we can try to go after.
My issue is that this is the response that's been given every year that I've been on the council, that we are staffing up to be able to have better capacity to go after more. This has been the response every year that I have been on the council. And given what everybody here knows of my priorities, I have to say, the, the least inspiring thing that I heard in the presentation here today is that we've made an offer to a new bike planner. Because I have no faith that the result of hiring this bike planner is going to be anything different than the result of any other bike planner, because we've lost every single bike planner that we've had since I've been on the council, and been having this same conversation about continuing to lose them. And they're not, they're not, we're not losing them because they're incompetent, we're losing them because they're very competent, but not because they just want to go somewhere else, but because we're not doing something right here in Baltimore City to keep them so that we can maintain this capacity, and are just endlessly in this cycle of not being able to apply for grants, not being able to do more, not being able to avail ourselves of available resources because we keep losing the people that we need in place to be able to do the work.
So I, unfortunately, I can't really speak to the, the past years like that. What I can tell you is that I am committed on staffing up. I am committed to developing the staff and expertise of the team. I am committed to getting as much money as we can, special money doesn't come on the city's dime, to go in and make improvements to our transportation infrastructure. In the short time that I've been here, you know, joined the city overall in September '21, there's been some, some key hires here. Our, our new right-of-way chief, and although he's right-of-way, he's still intertwined in everything that's going on and all the projects and things that we're, we're talking about here. We, we have our new planning chief who, you know, in that, Stussy wrote it, in that process of initially, you know, Theo meeting with him, and then myself, my chief of staff, meeting with him, part of that was really an opportunity for me to share with him my vision and, and the culture that I'm working on trying to develop, and to see if he fits with that. We're not trying to just find people, bodies to fill positions, we're trying to find people that buy into the, the vision and the desire to improve Baltimore, and he's all on board for that. And he has extensive experience and background from his own consultant firm in the past to working with MDOT, to dealing with transit, so many different areas. And so he alone is a great asset, and already we're seeing this culture change under his leadership within the planning division. So, you know, I'm, I'm confident in the team that we're building and, and the outlook for our efforts on, on, on all things bikes.
If I may add to things I think that are making this a little different, there's a few factors here. Number one, July 1st is the first fiscal year where our HUR step increases start going into place. Number two, we have the bipartisan infrastructure bill that passed in the nation's capital. And number three, we have a friend in Annapolis now. So all these factors coming together create a far different picture than, let's say, your first-term councilman when you were really beating the drum of reforming transportation in Baltimore City.
I, I appreciate the Chair and everybody indulging my time here, allowing me to take up their time. I just, it, it feels like we're at a chronic kind of impasse where we're not able to go after more because we are not able to retain the talent that we keep getting, and I don't have any confidence that a, a serious investigation has been, that there's been a, a come to Jesus with why these people keep leaving, and, and given any assurance that we're not going to lose the next person for the same reasons of the department dysfunction and lack of support for the mission. Because I hear a lot of lip service to the mission, but I also see and experience on a regular basis, actions from the department that are in diametric opposition to the lip service that is paid to Complete Streets and the mission of multimodalism as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. We've been joined by Deputy CAO Simone Johnson. We also have Councilman Tony- We also have Councilman Tony Glover, 13th District, and Councilman Isaac Gitze Schleifer, 5th District Member of the Committee. We're going to go Middleton, Schleifer, Burnett. Oh, and colleagues, as a reminder, for those who recently arrived, we're doing the one-question rule for DOT. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would be remiss if I first didn't thank you all for the work that you do. And just a special shout-out to Torina, Liam, and Eric James, which has, you know, they do a yeoman's job as far as being very responsive in my district, which is really mostly residential, just one business. And that Sinai Hospital really is, I'm strictly residential all the way. Attending meetings and representing your department is just very important, and I appreciate that. My, I guess, one of my questions, I know there's been, you know, you're still coming out of COVID, and there was a problem with ordering of signs and all those things. Can you tell us where you are with that? Because, you know, we have streets that, you know, still don't have stop signs. We still have problems with, you know, around school sites with pedestrian signage. Kind of that traffic information, I guess because of the slow response in ordering, there's been a slow response in the traffic office responding. And, you know, even some of your liaisons get frustrated because, you know, I communicate with them, but then there's no response. And that's what really gets to me, is that, you know, there needs to be a better response.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman President. I was waiting to make sure you were done. So, no, I understand that. Part of, so yes, the procurement of materials, that has been a very much a linchpin in our efforts in traffic calming. What we've been doing, a couple of things, is, one, making sure we have a comprehensive list of any of the procurements, or looking into, let's say that, not necessarily comprehensive list, but looking into all the different materials that we potentially need to check and see if there are existing contracts for them, if it's a contractual material supply issue, or if it's that we need new contracts. And then if it's new contracts, then where are they in the procurement process? Some of the challenges that we have been dealing with, and very well could have been in the past, kind of tied to COVID and some of those things, but we would receive quotes for certain things and then initiate the process. But before we could really get through the procurement process, sometimes those quotes would expire. And so we would kind of have to start the new process. So what we've been working on is then putting in emergency procurements to help to cover that gap period. So we've done that on things like some of the CIP poles and things to install signs. So we've put in certain emergency procurements to get those. And we have emergency procurements for other items. I think we just got another one approved yesterday, forgive me, I can't remember specifically what that was.
It's for the light pole bases.
Okay, thank you. So there's certain things that we've been using under the emergency procurement process, and then ordering to get those materials in, but while we're still working on the overall contracts that are needed. Additionally, I've been digging into the actual internal inventory stockroom processes to see what we need to do to have some red flags when we get to a certain threshold of saying, hey, we now, at this, we're at this level, we now either need to order new materials to restock, or if it is a thing where the contract's going to be wrapping up, then we need to initiate this procurement at this stage. So, and literally those conversations, that part of it, it's been like over the last couple of weeks that I've really been trying to dig into that and start those conversations. But what I see there is revamping the internal process. It's going to be developing some SOPs, it's going to be revisiting and doing unnecessary training that's needed for staff. Whatever we can do internally to make sure we're staying on top of it, that's what I want to happen. So it's going to take some steps there, but we are making improvements, we are getting materials, we're getting more work out there. And then if, but I would say if there are situations like something like a stop sign, that is a safety situation, please let me know, reach out to me and my staff, and we will try to work whatever needs to happen to get those more critical signs procured somehow, and get those out there.
So not just the signs do, are you saying you would need inspectors to, the response, you know, with not getting responses? And, you know, I'll give you a situation on the school on Charles Street that has consistently complained about that pedestrian, or the, no, the light that just is completely off, and it takes almost a month for someone from the traffic office to respond. And then the parents are just, we get the calls. So that's just one situation. Or is it, how many people are in that office that inspects lights around the city like that?
Okay, so, okay, got it. So I wasn't necessarily talking about that specifically, but you're talking about street lighting just out?
Just to add it, yeah.
Kendall, can you speak to the street lighting aspects?
I just wanted to be sure, because it sounded like she was mentioning the signal lights, or?
That's what I was curious, because there was a reference to traffic.
She was saying, were the signal lights?
All of it, it's just the response, and when, you know, people will follow the procedure and call 311. They'll report a light, whether it's a school, you know, a pedestrian light, a traffic light, or whatever. There is the response, and trying to get that thing fixed is terrible.
Well, speaking for Maintenance Division, I'm happy to say that we have a very high completion percentage when it comes to SLA for streetlights. Those are done by the Maintenance Division, which I'm responsible for. A good portion of those lights are maintained by BGE. And I'll be honest in saying BGE might not be as nimble as we are in getting lights repaired. But on occasions, we will contact BGE in the interest of getting it done quickly and let them know that we'll do it on their behalf. But when it comes to lights that are maintained by the Maintenance Division, we maintain a 90% to 95% SLA completion.
So one, and a question is on Charles Street in front of the cathedral, where the school is also there, and they constantly complain about the timing of that light and how they're sitting there. It's been almost a year with that problem back and forth. And I'm like, this should not take this long trying to fix a traffic, like, you know, in sync when they, when the kids get out of school. It shouldn't, it shouldn't take that long. It's shared between two districts, and we both get the 4th District and the 6th, and we both consistently are getting, and it's been over a year, and that problem has not, and the liaison even has a conversation with me and communicates with the office, and he's baffled by, there's just no communication, and timing.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that. So I think we're talking about two different items. So we're talking about the street lights themselves, and then we're talking about traffic signals. So on the traffic signal piece, I believe Chief Haynes is familiar with the concerns you're raising, and he would be able to speak to that matter.
Thank you, Director. Councilwoman President, I am familiar with that location. I recall getting some emails.
One second, there's some kind of static.
Sorry about that. So Councilwoman President, I am familiar with that issue. Excuse me, getting over a cold here. And we did dispatch some of our technicians to that location a few weeks ago. One of the challenges that we have is that sometimes our signals get out of synchronization because of clock drift. So we will sometimes have to send them back repeatedly over time. But, you know, once we're aware that issue's going on, you know, we try to keep an eye on intersections like that, knowing that they can get out of step more consistently. But I am familiar with that specific request. Remember that email from maybe, maybe March or April, I guess? There were a couple of emails that were sent to us about that. Just to answer your earlier question, we have two individuals who go out and troubleshoot.
For the entire city?
For the entire city, yes. But I will say that we just embarked on a $4.5 million traffic signal optimization project that's been underway since March. It's to retime and optimize over 1,100 traffic signals throughout the entire city. So we're hoping that that'll help us address some of those issues as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Councilman Schleifer?
Thank you, Director. I just want to thank you for your responsiveness. You know, every time I've reached out, I do appreciate that. And you really do across the board, when, you know, we've been seeing every agency here this week, you really do have an incredible staff across the board, with one exception. But across the board, you guys are doing very well and a very strong team. And so you're very fortunate, and we're fortunate to have you, so thank you. My first question is from my buddy right here in front of me, Bamal. How in the world, and I thought I was going to be the most disappointed with this tech list, but I guess I'm going to be second most disappointed with this tech list. How in the world is Seven Mile Lane from Racers Town Road to Park Heights not on that list? You guys redid Seven Mile Lane in my first year in office. You left it off this one block. Every single year since then, I was told, it's going to get done. And every single Thursday, and I know it's Thursday because I get the same constituent calling every single Thursday, why isn't it done yet? And so I would like to know why it's not done yet. And if it's not done by the end of the year, I'm just going to give him your cell number and let him start calling you instead. So can you tell me why it's not done?
Well, I'll jump in real quick. I know that Director Sharkey had brought that up, or had been talking with you about that, and it was relayed to me that that is a big priority. I have committed, we are committed to doing that for '24. Again, as Liam spoke about, as far as just how lean '23 was, we couldn't put it into the '23 budget. But I thought that, I think there may have been some communications, so if that didn't come to you, saying that we were committing to that for '24, my apologies on that.
No, Liam's been communicating, but I'm saying the, you know, this list came out, the money, there's money being spent. There's money being spent in my district. And so it's just not being spent on this one thing that we were told, and it's, it happens to be one of the most high-traffic streets in my district. And so like, you do a traffic count there, it certainly warrants it. Yet I see these projects happening in other spots that don't have a fraction of the traffic, and also are not, are not as bad. So you're telling me that this is going to for sure get done by, what date are we talking? Fiscal '24, calendar '24?
Including this in the calendar '24 list. Seven Mile Lane.
So that would start, what month do those construction projects start?
Like, this time next year. Well, as far as the construction season goes. So of course, we have the construction schedule, we worked that out with the contractor, but this is the construction season, so it would be next year.
Next year this time. Okay, so that's for sure going to be on there?
We're including it in the counting, calendar '24.
You'll throw a couple of spots also to my good colleague from the second?
I've heard her loud and clear.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you, Councilman Schleifer. We are going to Councilman Glover.
Thank you. So my question is, I've had questions, my block of Madison, East Madison, from Edison Highway down to like Washington Street. Those streets are like really, really bad. I even get phone calls even from our local Eastern District Police Department that's around the corner. And they'll even, you know, ask me like, what's the issue with getting these streets fixed down here? And it's part of the neighborhood. I've had conversations with, you know, different individuals in the past. I'm just kind of waiting to find out like exactly when will we be added to that list.
So, yeah, and I'm looking at Orange Cone right now, Councilman. So it looks like for 13, for Tech Division, we have a portion of Patterson Park Avenue and Preston Street.
I see Preston Street has been done, but I'm talking about East Madison.
We can certainly write that down. And then also for your in-house locations, I see a portion of North Curly, North Kenwood, and North Rose Street. But do you mind giving me the block for Madison again?
So Madison, again, it would start at Edison Highway.
Okay.
And you would go westbound to Patterson Park.
Okay.
All right. And right now, those would be the issues that I have for the moment. Thank you. Other than that, you guys are doing a great job, and I appreciate you, Councilman.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to add on to a comment about Orange Cone. So Frankfurt, Pennington, and also the second side of Patapsco are not on that list. And I know, Liam, that's a, those are issues and streets that the former councilmen have brought up that need resurfacing that are not on this list. So if they can be considered in the rest of the councilmatic districts, that would be great.
Yeah, and there, sometimes, so there's, for Patapsco, and I think a portion of Pennington, those are streetscapes, and those are concrete roads. So they're actually not included on that Orange Cone because they're separate. So we can definitely get you that full Capitol Projects list for D10.
Okay, that works perfectly. Yeah, they just need to be done. Then my next question has to do with trucks. So, you know, Director and Liam, we have talked on a number of occasions about the truck traffic in the district. And it was discussed at a few community meetings that DOT and BPD do not have the machinery to actually impound those trucks that we're seeing on Bayard, that we're seeing in areas of Westport. Can you speak to where in the budget you all have added that machinery so that we can impound those trucks, so that we can generate those enforcement fines for the city?
So yeah, I think it's getting more into the tow capabilities of tractor-trailers versus the normal vehicles that are out there. So Tavon, would you be able to speak to that?
Sure, we don't have, I'm sorry, good evening, Council. Yeah, we don't have the internal resources to tow those large vehicles. However, we do have the outside resources from the private towers that do. Now, they're sparing with those resources. However, we can make the requests and they can remove them in, maybe not in the SLA that's desired, but eventually they can remove those vehicles.
So I appreciate that response. And I'm not sure if you have the historical knowledge or the emails, but Liam, these trucks have been in the area for almost a year now. And what was discussed is that we don't necessarily have the machinery either through DOT and BPD. And so my question still remains, where are, where in the budget is that line item so that we can make sure that we get those trucks impounded? Or we have some sort of enforcement capability for those trucks that are sitting in neighborhoods for a longer period of time?
Hear you loud and clear, Councilman. What we can do after the hearing, we can talk offline, get those specific locations, flag it for Tavon's team, and use our contractual resources. And I do want to say, sometimes, and we've actually experienced this the hard way, I think every agency that has a fleet of vehicles does, sometimes you get those larger vehicles that you don't use as much. It can be a maintenance issue. So sometimes it actually makes sense for us to put the onus on the private sector, to have those tow fleets to tow those vehicles, you're not towing as much. But we do hear you loud and clear, and I think this is really about getting those specific locations and making sure our towing and Safety Division is aware.
Thank you so much for that, Liam, but respectfully, I'm going to have to disagree with you. You've been on a number of emails that my communities in Pig Town and Westport have sent over the past few days regarding these locations. And so, you know, if we do have those private, if we do have those private entities that are towing, why hasn't that been done by now?
So I, and I appreciate your feedback. We have actually towed, I know in Pig Town, ahead of our community walk we did in February, we did actually tow a number of those tractor-trailers ahead of the, ahead of our community walk.
So we'll, but we will go back and look and see which ones still remain. Even if we did have to just go out there and look and see what exists and make sure everything's been properly inspected or sighted, and then work on getting them towed.
Thank you, and I just want to reference an email that I believe one of my residents sent a few days ago with specific locations of trucks that are still on Bayard.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Got it.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you, Director, for joining us. So this is an issue I raised with DPW and a few of the other larger agencies. When we looked at the budget book, we do see a lot of contracting, a ton of vacancies. And I think one of the biggest missed opportunities we have in the city is our outreach and recruitment of new Americans. We have a lot of folks that, when you look at other cities, make up the huge portions of their municipal workforce and are reflective of the diversity of those cities. And I would, I would flag that. I don't feel the same way for many of our larger agencies, DPW, DOT, et cetera. And it's not to say that you all aren't trying to, you know, attend work, you know, work fairs and, and other things. But regardless of where we are in the city, there should be materials that are in multiple languages. There should be speakers at those tables who speak multiple languages and are being very attentive about how we recruit and bring in folks who English may not be their first language, but have a ton of skills that could be value-added to our agencies. And so can you speak to the work that your agency's doing to better recruit new, new Americans into the workforce, into DOT, to fill positions that, right now, we are doing a lot of outsourcing through contracting work? Or just simply not filling vacancies in a way that is adequate and acceptable?
Sure. Thank you for that. So I wish I could come in here and say that we've got this great, wonderful, robust plan. This is what we're doing, but we're not there right now. But I, I do understand your, your approach, your concerns there. And so we've actually recently been having some conversations. Marley, our, excuse me, Director of Communications, so, you know, she's multilingual and, and she, I know that she has some different contacts with different organizations as well. We, we have some outreach with the Theodinio Salt Box Event, you know, where we're trying to get engaged. And so I do see where there's an opportunity for us to kind of build some relationships and look at our outreach efforts and recruiting efforts. And so we will definitely work on that and then try to make some contacts with different organizations. So I like the idea.
Yeah, and I, I'm just saying like, even if you're, I think it's one thing, because what I see a lot of agencies do, if they're in Southeast Baltimore, they'll bring a Spanish speaker with them to, to make that communication. There's Spanish-speaking folks that live in my district and there should be someone that speaks Spanish that can communicate with them at Edmonton High School.
Yes.
We have a lot of folks who are Romanian or Yemen, Yemen, from Yemen in my district, living in the Beechfield area. Like there are folks who are, are here with a lot of skills and they come to a table at a job fair and everything's in English. And nobody speaks any of the languages they speak. And so they may have come from their home country and may have been a engineer or a tech. And maybe that language barrier is the challenge, but nonetheless, the skills are there and we need to be tapping into the diversity of the city of Baltimore and being very intentional about that. And this is something I've raised and not picking on DOT, but I will plan to raise this with every agency that comes before us. Because I think we are, have a huge missed opportunity and we're wasting a lot of tax dollars either not filling vacancies or hiring contractors to do work that folks can do in the city right now. The, the second thing I wanted to raise, and I think a lot of what you're hearing today about traffic calming and communication is simply that. And we've had this conversation before, not only with the council offices, but with our constituents. You know, when we're, we're talking about, you know, folks, it just feels like, again, I've used this term before, a black hole in many ways where information comes in and it takes an extended amount of time to get anything to come back out. And, you know, whether we're talking about, you know, a need for updates, communicating the length of time the traffic calming requests may take, opaque guidance on process around like some traffic calming measures may take people going to do surveys. Some of them may not, like. And that information is not laid out upfront. And so our office has become the punching bag for a lot of constituents who are concerned. And we don't even always have the answer. And like, where does this stand? When are we getting the speed bump? When is the traffic study going to be done? Has it been referred to the fire department or police? Nobody seems to know unless we keep punching, pushing, pushing. And again, that's from our office. The constituents, they just call 311 and it's just like, well, we've received the request and it'll be done. Something will happen in eight months, maybe. And there's just not that sort of, hey, I can go on the website or I can type it in and I can see, hey, this is sitting in the, the traffic division or it needs funding from the Capitol or whatever that information is. Because that, a lot of the visceral we get on this issue is because people just don't know what's happening. Like, and I think people would be understanding that, hey, it may take six to eight months to complete this process. Or we ran out of money this year and we'll do it next year. Whatever it is, like, we got to be able to tell people something. And I would say that this agency more than the others, that opaqueness is the most frustrating by far. And I know we've talked about it. I do just wanted to put on the record because I think this is what we're hearing from my colleagues is that like, people just don't know what's happening. And it shouldn't take us like repeatedly emailing you or Liam or other folks to try and get answers when we, the technology exists for this information to be publicly available, for folks to search where things stand, or to have a liaison that understands exactly all of the projects in a, in a particular council district that they can just quickly refer to and say, hey, this is where it sits. This is where the next steps are. And this is where you can expect additional information to come out. Even if it's not, and we're not talking just the completion date. We're just saying, tell us what's happening. And I, and I, you know, allow you to respond to that.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. I really appreciate that. And, and I understand exactly where you're coming from. Even me initially coming to the agency, you know, I'm also looking for like, hey, where's the process? What is this? What do we follow? Is there SOP? You know, so I, I get it. It all makes sense. And, and that's another part that we, we are working on and we're, and we're digging into. My, my staff's probably like, I can't even tell you how many times they've heard it, but I've been explaining that, that we've got to be more proactive in the communications, that we can't let a request come in and then X amount of time goes by and there's nothing that's really out there. And then, and then the worst thing that, you know, tell them could happen is then one of you all reach out asking for the status, thinking that something's going to be done by May 31st. And so you reach out, shoot him first like, hey, what's the status? Cause I haven't got a response. And then you hear, oh, I'm sorry, it's going to be delayed. It's going to be this date now. So we're working on internal processes. So part of that one is with the usage of City Works. So we're, we're doing, actively doing some training with staff on how to better utilize City Works. So that when the different requests and things come in, we can do a better job of trying to track them and properly manage them and assign them to staff. And then myself and my leadership team will be able to kind of dig into that and check into the status of these things. And if it is something that will be a multiple month type of something, then trying to build in their like timeframes to provide statuses, updates on things. Also, that's part of the reason why my chief staff and I have been setting up the meet and greets with you all and, and trying to set up some type of recurring meetings. Because I don't want you all to have to reach out over and over and over again, trying to get updates and statuses. And so behind the scenes, Viobia has a, you know, has a list of those different requests that we've received from you all. And so she's working with the staff to check on the statuses so that we can try to do that on a routine basis, make sure that we're providing that information to you all. So in the event that a requested come in and it went to one of the staff level, one of the divisions, then we're able to provide that back to you all. And so we're, we're making improvements there. I, I understand your concerns.
And I, and I would just wrap up, Mr. Chair. I would just want to just second the, the quality control comment that Councilman Stokes made about contractors. We had a recent situation which we're getting resolved with your team, where a contractor just was not doing adequate, they weren't, they were, the contract said they were supposed to be doing edging work. They clearly were not doing any edging work because the vegetation is pouring into the street. And it took us literally coming out there to watch them do it. And just flagging that, that, that quality control is important because again, the assumption is that for my constituents is that this is work that's done internally by DOT staff, which isn't fair because you have a contractor that's not doing their job, not you not doing the job. And so just flagging that, that piece is just, is important for all of us to make sure that tax dollars are being spent with contractors. We expect the work to be done based on what's in the contract. And so whatever improvements can be made in, in that function, I would just second and third anybody else on this, this panel that has experienced something similar.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to just echo real quick what the councilman was saying. I mean, I, I, I mean, I don't know what's wrong with doing a dashboard, an internet dashboard to be able to let us know what traffic calming requests have, not just us, the public know. Unless there's something that you don't want the public to know, like in terms of, you know, where the most of the traffic calming requests are, which I know they're in, I have a lot of them in my district. But I do think that it's, it's, it's got to, there's got to be that public facing. So, so just putting that out there. And I do want to thank the department for, you've done a really amazing amount of work in my district and I really appreciate it. I do want to back up my colleague. It's pretty inexcusable not to have a tech project in her district. That's just, you can't do that. So I hope you work that out. My, I have several, but one, my, my question is about, I have two neighborhoods that have the money to do some of these projects on their own. But it's taking forever to get developers' agreements to be, and as a matter of fact, there's one particular project that's just been going back and forth because DOT says a different thing and a different thing and a different thing. I think that, that process of getting a developer's agreement is going to have to be streamlined. And I know we usually get developers' agreements for like big developments, but in this case, I have two communities, one that's active and one that's thinking about it, that are like, we don't want to wait for the city. We're going to pay for it ourselves. And so, but that developer's agreement is going to be critical, obviously, because they can't do anything until that happens. So can you tell us a little bit more about how, I mean, and, and I do know that in some cases, some bigger developments, you know, the developer's agreements also take forever. So what, what's the process of starting to streamline that so that we can get some of these projects going that, you know, people themselves want to, want to pay for?
Well, I'll, I'll just say what we, what we can do is look at that project, not, I don't have the name on the top of my tongue, but I think I know what you're talking about. Yeah. So I, I think it's a matter, you know, for us to just look at that and kind of see what that process looks like for the type of work. And I know the developer's agreement process, you know, is, is very much a linear type of process and it involves a lot of different agencies. So I have no problem for us looking at that to see if there's any ways to try to have some type of a hybrid approach or some other streamlined approach for certain types of work. But we haven't yet dug into that. But I'd be willing to look into that.
Yeah, I think also part of it though goes back to my colleague who was talking about the turnover. Because one person said one thing and then there was a turnover and then somebody is saying something else and then there was turnover. So I think it, it melds into the, a lot of the similar, you know, issues as well. But it shouldn't take six months to get a, a developer's agreement. And this has actually been over two years that this has been happening. So hopefully that's another piece that you can look into in terms of the, you know, again, there's residents that want to do, you know, what, what needs to be done without waiting for DOT, where DOT want, we need DOT to use their resources in areas where there aren't residents that could pay for this. So I think that's extremely, you know, all over the city. So I think that's, that's got to be one, one piece of it. So I have tons of other questions, but I'll stick to my one.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director, and to your team as well. We'll also reiterate my colleague's point about timelines on traffic studies and actually just missing dates. I mean, even giving a date and then not hitting it, which again, to his point, leaves our constituents extremely frustrated. Question I wanted to ask, first question I wanted to ask was about the Greenway Trails. This is a potentially transformative project for Baltimore. We do not have, we, we have some of the best urban parks in our city and in, in the country. But we do not have a great trails network. Our parks are often disconnected from each other. And we have neighborhoods in Baltimore that just lack access to any kind of real walkable green space. I haven't gotten the sense that we are all in on this project. It's felt disjointed. It hasn't felt like we've taken advantage to apply to every grant out there. And especially given that this is primarily going to be a state-funded and grant-funded initiative. I would just really hope that we would aggressively push to get it done. I realize there are parts of the city where folks have had challenges and I think we need to listen to everybody and make sure that all voices are heard. But at the end of the day, if Baltimore is going to grow as a city, we need the Greenway Trails. We, we need to do big, bold, transformative projects that improve quality of life for the people that live here. And so I wanted to ask you, I've had a good conversation with the chief administrator, but I did want to ask from just the DOT perspective, where are we on that project and the sort of interconnectedness of the different agencies that are working on it?
No. So we are, DOT is fully committed towards all efforts for that, for the Greenway Network Trail. We of course are responsible for that northern section. And so we have worked out, you know, some of the concerns in the 33rd section. And so we're working out some of the concerns on the Gwens Falls area, that western section of it. We're actively working with a consultant, trying to still work through some details of alternatives and things like that to kind of further refine it, to try to address some of the concerns. So we're still plugging ahead. And I know that the, the, the team is also actively involved with the Department of Planning and, and those, the mayor's office and others that are involved in the other sections as well. Of course, like we said, you know, we are applying today for that connector piece. So at least to try to, where we can, to try to help towards supporting the overall efforts. But we, we're fully committed. I know if Liam or Theo have anything else to add?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you were here to hear the Director's opening remarks. But we did submit, we are submitting an application today to, to do the Boston Street Connector portion of the Greenway Trails. And I know Theo can add some, some additional points, but I, I think the eastern segments, which, you know, I'm well aware of the community's support over there. The complication is Norfolk Southern Right of Way. That my understanding is the city has not acquired that land yet. But Theo, do you have anything else to add?
Thank you, Liam. I just want to add that, Councilman, this is a comprehensive approach. So you are referring to DOT's role, but we believe it is actually more of a city agency's role. So it's us, is the planning department very much involved in the acquisition of the real estate piece on the eastern park. But it's also vacant parks because historically DOT was never responsible for trail, whether it's the actual design and construction and/or the maintenance. It was always a function of recreation and parks. But we are willing and we've met with them in several occasions to really start looking at this comprehensively. That's kind of where we stand.
No, and look, I appreciate that. And Liam, we, my office actually wrote a letter on behalf of the Boston Street Corridor and submitted it along with the grant. So definitely, you know, appreciate it. It's just felt very fragmented to me, like no one has really owned this project. No one has really driven this project. And again, my concern is that we just stall out. You're absolutely right. The Norfolk Southern portion is a challenge. But it's a challenge that we have to get through because if we're going to both retain residents and grow, we need to focus on quality of life. And having a great trails network has been transformative in Austin, in DC. We can grow without displacing folks and without becoming unaffordable. And I think that this project can be a big part of that because I hear across the city, people want access to nature. It has a healing component and I just hope that DOT is really pushing hard to make it happen. And I just don't want to be here next year having the same conversation.
No, I appreciate that and we, we are fully committed, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Director, longtime complaint of mine is around BGE resurfacing after gas main projects. I do not believe the street cut policy requires curb-to-curb resurfacing to hold BGE appropriately accountable. Can you please talk about what can be done to make changes to ensure that when BGE comes in and tears up a street to install a new gas main, that they resurface curb-to-curb?
Yes. So as it stands right now with the new street cuts policy, if they impact 50% or more of the roadway, then they're having to do more of a curb-to-curb approach. So if they are just on the eastbound travel lane, then they have to patch that. As far as the specific details of the extent of it, you know, we can speak to it. My, my team can speak to that. So you're aware that, that right there has been met with a lot of challenges, not just BGE, but just all the utility providers. But what we're, where we, for example, have roadways that are in a poorer condition and BGE or someone else is maybe coming in and they're resurfacing one half of the roadway because that's where their cut was. Sorry, finger hit the microphone. We are looking to see if, after they finish that section, if there's portions of it that we might have to, we might be able to come in there and kind of like close the gap. And so if they only did one half of the roadway, can we look and do the other half? The only challenge with that is working through the ADA aspect. So if we are doing some type of resurfacing curb-to-curb, So if we are doing some type of resurfacing curb-to-curb, then that is gonna trigger us making improvements to those ramps as well. So that's part of what we're working through, but just making that change to get that 50% trigger, that was a huge improvement from the old policy.
Recognizing it's an improvement, what is, what is the challenge associated with the new 50% plus-one rule?
Well, so the thing about it is, from a maintenance operations standpoint, if you impact something, then you're almost like responsible for putting back, addressing what you impacted, okay? And so we don't want really narrow portions being paved because that creates maintenance issues and with all the extra seams of the pavement. So it is a wider section that they're having to put back from a patch standpoint, but if we have someone say, oh, you trench in this roadway, you have to do the entire roadway, that becomes more of a capital-type approach to the roadway improvements and it's a little bit more challenging to get someone just doing work and having to do typical repairs to do a full upgrade of the roadway. So those are some of the challenges with that. But I don't know if Kendall, if you have anything else that you might be able to share regarding that?
Nothing additional, Director.
Thank you. Appreciate the response. BG frequently stores heavy equipment across the street, on the other side of the street when they do these projects, sick and tired of it. I think we own the streets, owner of the streets is the mayor and the city council. We should make them resurface the entire street curb-to-curb. Anything less is unacceptable. BG continues to deteriorate our streets and they need to be held accountable for that. I would appreciate if you guys would go back after this budget hearing and look into that and figure out how we can get more out of BG, especially considering the significant pay rate that was just imposed upon us as rate payers. Thanks.
The one thing I would add is if you, if, is if potentially there is some location that they are storing equipment or materials, one, feel free to check with us to see if we've authorized that to happen, if it's permitted or not, and then we will hold them accountable for that and issue any fines. But then if by some chance it was approved and then you're seeing where there is some type of impact deterioration to the pavement, any pictures, anything, you can let us know. We will also investigate that as well. And so anything, so if they in fact have damaged, done some damage to the pavement or whatever else because of that equipment, then we'll hold them accountable. So it might be a thing that if we can show that, yes, they have impacted the roadway, that they would have to do all of that, even though they weren't trenching that location. So it could be a kind of a case-case basis right now, but we will look into it for you.
Thank you, whatever you can do to look into that. Again, they need to resurface our streets, which we own, after they damage them curb-to-curb 100%. Councilwoman McCray.
With the upcoming project, looks like it's, this is very small, 2R22010, that's gonna be the tech project on Hartford Road from Northern Parkway to the city line. And that would be in my colleague, Councilman Dorsey's district. Knowing that the other portion where a lot of quick build options were placed on Hartford Road has led to multiple, not multiple, let me say has led to massive transit coming through my district. So with this new, with this new project that's taking, that's gonna be taking place, what plans does DOT have to mitigate this new, this new tech project that you're doing on Hartford Road, pushing traffic through my district on Bel Air Road, where we clearly need a million-dollar traffic project? And also, can you speak to when you're doing these projects, how are you planning for when traffic is going into other areas to divert from these new projects?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. One of the things we did with this specific project you mentioned, which is Hartford Road, oh, you can't, I'm sorry. So to address the project you specifically mentioned, which was Hartford Road, one of the things we've started to do and we did with this specific project was to include in scope traffic analysis, to look at what the impacts would be of the road diet or any physical changes to the roadway, so that we could come up with mitigation strategies such as signal retiming and optimization to try to mitigate any potential impacts. So that is a way that we sort of validate the recommendation and make sure that there's no spreaded impacts throughout some of the other corridors and communities.
Director, Chief Haynes, can we make sure that we meet about this project that's happening on Hartford Road, so I can know the impacts that will happen within my district?
We'd be glad to meet.
Thank you. We're going to go to VP Middleton, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. Let's talk a little bit about bridges and intersections and intersections that are connected to really almost, the bridge is almost right there and, you know, how we're going to really push and move forward to get these things, you know, taken care of and corrected. And I can specifically give some areas, the bridge that's right there on Northern Parkway along with the intersection of Falls Road and Northern Parkway, 5, 6 neighborhood, shared with other districts. Another one, I guess, would be West Cold Spring Lane where Polywestern is, aging bridge connected to the light rail. Been trying for years to also get a overpass because the Jones Falls Trail is right there. At times, we have hundreds of bikers that come across there. The project at Woodbury is going to be growing, police station right there. As my colleague mentioned about, you know, planning ahead with these things is just so important. We have, you know, big area parks like Drew Hill Park that's going through a big transition. All of that traffic is gonna be filtering through Park Heights, Greenspring, all major fairfares, Liberty Heights, and we're, we're having accidents. Everything is happening all at once and help is not happening fast enough. So is it, you know, I know you're applying for grants, you're doing all, all kinds of things. Are there areas that you need more city money to try to get? Because at the end of the day, it's about safety for our constituents. Please respond.
Okay, thank you for that. So, yes, DOT could always use money. Wherever it comes from, we will accept it. So, yeah, the reality is that there's always, there's, there's, there's a large demand for traffic calming and improvements. That's just the simple reality. We are taking an approach of trying to look at the highest priority. We have a new traffic calming policy that's kind of laying out how we go about looking at it. And so it's looking at the, the crash rates, it's looking at the pedestrian or impacts as far as if there's pedestrian crashes and, well, Chief of Traffic can get into the specifics of the traffic calming policy if you'd like to know that. But it's, it's a, it is a work in progress. I mean, it's, but, but the money, we need the money, we would accept any amount of money, but there's just still so much work to be done. That, that, no dollar amount, honestly, probably realistically could we get that's gonna be able to allow us to really hit it in a really short amount of time. So we can make some really impactful changes and that's what we're trying to do as we're going through and looking as, at the city and trying to prioritize locations and get work done. We are, with that new traffic calming policy, that also does include aspects of the equity that wasn't there before historically. So we are looking at it through a different lens and Will and his team and Clea, they're all digging into it from that standpoint. If there's a, you know, yes, we've talked about the, the Falls and Northern Parkway. I mean, there are specific locations that you would like to talk about. I would love to meet with you again and can bring in the traffic chief. And that's some of what I've been doing, also with some of the meet and greets. Initial ones have been myself and my chief of staff, but then if you say, you know what, I want to talk about this on the next meeting, then I'm bringing in the staff. So whether it's Kendall to talk about maintenance items or if it's the traffic chief, I can bring in them to try to dig into some of those concerns that you might have.
Director, if I may add a couple of points here. So Northern Parkway Falls Road, as I, as I think you're aware, Council Vice President, we do have that in our CIP, so that's in our capital improvement plan. And then for Tamarind and Cold Spring, we have committed to doing some quick build intersection safety improvements. And just for the council here to understand, because I think there's certain things that, as an agency, we're equipped to do quickly, you know, when the materials are there. And then there's other things that just the industry standard, it takes time. And the way that we can do the most with stretching city dollars is to use that 20% local match to tap 80% federal match, so you get 80% federally funded projects. The issue is that the timeline with those projects are typically six to 10 years, six to 10 years. But the taxpayers are getting, you know, the, the, the most stretch out of that dollar and you're getting a hardscape project. But that's an industry standard. That's not limited to Baltimore City Department of Transportation. That's how things go at SHA, that's how things go at Montgomery County or Baltimore County. So that's part of level-setting expectations with our constituents. And I know that with Director Johnson and with our traffic chief, William Haynes, we have been focusing on stepping up our capacity to do those quicker, quick build construction projects. But for those longer-term cement hardscape in the ground using federal dollars, it takes multiple years to go from banking the money to planning to community outreach to construction and finally it's complete.
I think a piece that's missing is, you know, granted, you said things take six to 10 years. We understand that and you understand that, but it's, here we go with the communication and education piece again to neighborhoods. They don't understand that. And I don't know if there needs to be a task force with certain projects that are in, you know, that's affecting a specific neighborhood, but, you know, it's an idea to have, you know, have separate, a separate traffic meeting for certain areas. I know you periodically do that, but if it's a major prob, you know, if it's a major intersection that's affecting a lot of people, you might need to have a little special task force for it. The conversation helps to, helps people to understand and stop the thinking that the project is, is trying, you know, you're trying to make the project disappear or something. That communication piece is just so important with the neighborhoods, because at the end of the day, it's their tax dollars that are helping to, you know, update these areas. So I reach out and say, that's one thing that your, you know, team should, and you had mentioned training. Try to get some training on how to formulate these groups with neighborhoods. Talking to the people is, is the number one thing. Talking and explaining, because they live in these areas where these intersection bridges, where, where they're having accidents, they live there and they want to communicate with all of you. They want to sit down and have those conversations. They come to us because they're not, you know, they want, they, you're not, they're not getting the updates. You're not giving them the update, so they come to us to complain and then we, it's, it's a layer that can be avoided if you just reach out and try to communicate directly with the, build relationships with the presidents of the, all these surrounding associations. That relationship building is so important, especially for this, for this department. It would, it would stop a, a number of questions that we, we are, you know, raising to you.
Okay.
Just some feedback.
No, appreciate that. And actually, I'd be interested in setting up another follow-up meeting with you to maybe just talk about a little more, pick your brains tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam VP. Councilman Schleifer, and we've also been joined by Councilman Mark Conway, fourth district. Councilman Schleifer, fourth.
Just to follow up to what the Vice President, you guys were just discussing about Northern Parkway Falls and you were saying that the project's coming up. Has there been an answer yet to all the communities there? They're all unified in saying that they absolutely do not want a bike lane on that road. It makes absolutely no sense to have a bike lane there. There's actually the Jones Falls Trail a block away that's a protected lane, so has that been taken off the table?
So we've provided numerous updates.
Well, why don't you give us the final one on the record?
Sure.
Is, is the bike lane taken out of that plan?
So we're, we're still, number one, we're still banking money for this project. So I would say that this is still fluid. However, I will say this, we, that corridor, Falls Road, was identified in the Bicycle Master Plan as being an area where a separated bike facility was recommended. So that's the first point. The second point is, is that we're required by city code to follow the complete streets ordinance. And, you know, we have a Complete Streets Manual that has been adopted and, you know, while, you know, I've communicated to our traffic team based on feedback from this body and some of our partners in Annapolis, that we should be flexible, it is challenging when we have a report that was published where that was recommended and we also have these laws baked in the city code.
So, I mean, you know, to, to what Councilman Dorsey had just said, you know, he, he said complete streets is all lip service and we, when we, when that bill was passed, it was made very clear that it was not a requirement, it was an advisory, that that's how you had to view projects in that light. Now, I will challenge any one of you in DOT that, that rides bikes to come, I mean, I'm not gonna ride my bike, I'll drive alongside you, because I know that you, you don't ride your bike over there. It doesn't make any sense whatsoever. It's already, it's too tight for, for cars alone as it is. And why in the world would you build a protected bike lane a block away from a bike trail that they'd just spent 20 years building and it's complete and it's great and people love it and it's utilized every single day? Why, why would you, because somebody identified that in a report? I, I mean, that's, that is, Liam, that's absolutely ridiculous that, that we're even having this conversation. There is no world in which you should have any project on that road right there or anybody who's actually physically gone out there and attempted to stand on whatever's left of the sidewalk that's there that would say that's a good idea. Now, if you want to expand the sidewalk, put some crosswalks there, great, I'm all for that. You're not going to put a bike lane on, you're, the, the whole reason why there needs to be improvements there is because it is already too tight, there's no space at all, it's right by the entranceway to 83, and again, nobody will ride their bike there. Nobody. There's no reason to. There's a bike trail a block away. So there needs to be an in writing response, the community associations and community groups in my district, along with Council Vice President's district, co-authored a letter, which we forwarded to you and they've sent to you as well directly, being unified in their response to oppose that. We need a commitment out of DOT. We don't want, I don't want a surprise where I wake up one morning and all of a sudden, you know, there's a truck there and you guys are gonna start construction and start putting up flex posts, because I will take them down. And so I just don't want us to get to that point where we're even going down that road because it's, this isn't even like, hey, is this, you know, some people want, some people, I ride, I ride my bike, I like riding bikes. You, you can't ride over there, period, end of story. And so, you know, that gets to the other thing that, you know, that you have projects, you always have people on both sides of every project. I don't know anybody who says that that's a good idea to have that there. So please get a response. So please get a response and a commitment that, yes, we do need the capital improvements to that intersection there, but that does not involve a bike lane. That doesn't involve any flex post, anything, period. Okay? My.
We'll take the bike lane on Hartford Road.
You can take it wherever you would like, just don't put it on Falls Road in my district. All right, so my question is, there, there's, in your agency, you guys pay out overtime instead of comp time, correct?
It depends on the position.
Okay. So, you know, I had requested a while ago, there, there are certain positions where there's a need for overtime to be paid out. There are services that you guys provide where they need to be there after hours, whether it be our great agents, ticketing agents, who need to be there for nights and weekends when there is events going on, or, you know, we need, there's certain issues. Or it might be traffic agents when there's, you know, nights and weekends, events and stuff. That is a good use of overtime. What is a bad use of overtime? And I'll give a personal story from a few weeks ago. I noticed a city car pulled up in front of my neighbor's house on Saturday morning. I was walking outside and I was surprised, what's this car doing then? A gentleman got out of the car and he was just walking around. And so I went over and introduced myself and said hello, offered him a drink and, you know, asked what brought him to the, to, to that location. He said he was inspecting the roadwork that had been done. No roadwork had been done on my block. And so I said, well, what roadwork? I, there hasn't been any road. Let me look at my sheet. Oh, actually, it was from 2000 and, I don't know, it was 2006, 2008, 2010, it was something like that. Many years ago, maybe it was 12, it wasn't in the past five years, okay? That there was roadwork done and he was coming out to inspect it. And he pulled up a sheet and he showed me the sheet that he was inspecting. He said, how can you inspect it? The roadwork is done, the, the road's almost ready to be redone again. What are you inspecting? You can't even see anything, it's already done. He's like, oh, yeah, it's a good point, but we have a list and we're trying to get through the backlog. That gentleman was out there getting paid overtime on a Saturday morning, looking at a road which is in perfect fine condition as far as how the work was done, when it was done, years ago. Why would they be out there inspecting a list from five years ago or more?
Yes, I don't know the details of that. I don't know if you have any more information, we can certainly look into that. But to your point, I understand the need for us to make sure that there's appropriate justified overtime, you know. So I, I agree with you on that point.
Yeah, so I, I started this request under the previous director and I still haven't gotten it, so hopefully you can help me get it. I had requested an overtime report of a list of overtime by bureau within DOT, doing the same thing for other agencies as well. Just like to know who's getting overtime and how much they're doing. Now, I don't, I'm not concerned about the comp time. I'm talking about strictly dollars we're paying out in overtime. Now, I've already stated, I'm not concerned, you know, I'm, I'm expecting and hoping to see that there's going to be overtime for certain critical functions, but I'd like to see.
And Councilman, that's a committee request, correct?
Uh, yeah, well, it's been my request, but now it's a committee request. So if you.
Can you, can you restate your request, please?
My request is a list of all overtime that has been paid out and what, and who it's been paid out to. So the division, the, the work that they're doing, who's getting what overtime? That started, that request started, I think, two years ago when I found out that community liaisons whose jobs are to go to community meetings are getting paid overtime to attend community meetings in the evening. That is their job to do. So I don't know how you get in overtime to attend the meetings.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms., you have his request?
Okay.
Yes, can I also add to that request, Chair McCray?
Sure.
Oh, thank you so much. I want to, I want to actually add to that data point, how many vacancies you have by division to that request as well. Because I think that that speaks a lot to the vacancy rate and who's doing overtime to speak about, to kind of really understand the staffing model and operations of DOT. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. We're going to move to council, and thank you, Councilman Schleifer. We're going to move to Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for being a little bit late. Director, it's a pleasure. Been a pleasure working with you thus far and looking forward to continuing to work with you. My first question is regarding some of the work happening at the state level. So the state SHA is, has begun conducting infrastructure reviews following pedestrian and bicyclist fatalities that occur on state roadways. But because there are no state managed roadways in the city, we won't really benefit at all from that assessment. I was curious if that's something that DOT has thought about looking into, or is already looking into, or if there's some way to have the state consider those factors here in the city.
All right, so I'll speak just briefly and then I'll probably turn it over to Will. But we do receive, if I'm understanding what you're referring to, we do receive, for example, crash data information from the state. Unfortunately, just because they go through the vetting and process, there's like a year, you're, you're, you're behind. So, you know, we get last year's data this year type of thing. So, but we, we, we have a team both within the traffic division and within the planning division. Who's, planning division kind of focused on like, towards zero kind of mindset, and then the traffic from the safety standpoint. So we have internal reviews of looking at the data and trying to look and see where are our high areas, high safety concerns, and then trying to come up with different plans, whether it is within the traffic division or within the planning division, to tackle and plan work for those locations. So we're doing that on a rolling, I say on a rolling basis as far as improvements on an annual basis, but we have regular internal meetings that brings together key individuals within the agency to dig into that data and, and they work with our data team as well. Is there anything else, Will or Athel, you might want to add to that?
Yeah, not, not much to add there, just that, you know, we always take safety and, and crash history into account when we're doing evaluations. So we will look at the data, occasionally do a collision diagram to see, okay, what are the patterns and contributing factors? And try to develop mitigations based on that assessment. You know, another thing that we, we do is, you know, obviously, we look at everything from a complete streets perspective. So we're doing peer review of plans, say from DPW or Tech or anywhere else, we're always looking at it from a multimodal perspective.
I see, so you're saying essentially this is work that we constantly do?
Yes.
Yeah, it's ingrained in what, in what we do consistently.
Okay. Would you be able to provide an example of one of these as a, as a committee request? Just an example of one of the assessments that we do for a corner, just so I can have an understanding of what that may look like?
Yeah, that should be no problem.
Thank you. My other question is regarding.
Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Sorry, we're doing one question at a time.
Oh, no problem.
And we're, and we're keeping it brief, we're limiting comments, just as a reminder to our colleagues. So we'll come back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're going to get to Councilwoman Porter.
No additional questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's talk about conduits. So I don't see here, although I may have missed it, the, the amount that we're getting from BGE each year, or was it a lump sum of 134 million in one check? Are we getting annual?
So, so we're not actually getting a check. They're doing a certain amount, kind of like per year worth of work for that, that overall amount. So that's that cumulative number over the entire period. What we will be getting is the 1.5, since long since I've talked about it, the 1.5, kind of like the maintenance that's going to go, be going to, or maintenance fees is going to be coming towards the city. So, but then at the end of that four-year timeframe, if they have money that is unspent, then that's where they will write a check for that amount to come to the city into the conduit fund.
So I, I've asked for this before, but I really need a plan, and this is a request, to figure out, I'm, I'm very concerned that there aren't any indicators in here about BG, is BGE going to be acting into these indicators? You know, these indicators that are on the Service 548. Is that you that will be doing these indicators? And then also the communications plan. I'm just, I'm still very upset about BGE and their lack of communication with residents about what they're doing, when they're doing it. And it has to be part of the permit that you give them. So we just, I just have, still am waiting for in writing, based on the BGE conduit hearings that we had, you know, what that plan is from BGE. It was very, they did give us a response from my initial plan, email. But in terms of what, what is the commitment from, that, that you're going to hold them to in terms of communications with residents, resurfacing in a timely manner, notification, all of those things. So I just need to get that in writing as to how you're going to be handling that. Because, you know, obviously DOT will be overseeing all of that. And again, I just, they're, they're, they've been pretty terrible about communication. So we have to hold them accountable if we're going to allow them to be in our conduit, have this, this permission for the conduit.
Yep, nope, understood and I understand your concerns and appreciate your comments. So we are still actively working with BGE to work out all of those details of logistics. The condo division, Mr. Braxton, Adam McCloud, our right-of-way chief and others, we've all been working with them and making some good progress. We're still engaging also with finance and others to try to iron out some of the details. But we've been talking about what is going to be their full responsibility. We've been working on trying to draft up the, the permit language that's going to cover all of their work. We've also been talking through the communications plans. So they are developing, we're developing, we're reviewing, reviving. So we haven't ironed it all out yet, but that is, your concerns are being captured in the requirements. I've already told them that this is going to be a little different than what they're used to, that, that we have to hold them to a certain level. And we're working on also, you know, from a performance standpoint, like what that's going to look like. So recognizing when they're first revving up to start doing the work, like right now, you know, they're not actively out there right now doing the conduit work, that type of thing. So they're working towards that. So some of what we've been talking about was looking at our initially planned CIP, the locations we were planning on doing, capital work, and saying, these were the locations we were planning on doing. You review these and see if you can now take, just take these one and say, yep, we're going to move forward with these locations. And so we're still working out those details. But we will get to the point where we can share with all of you all what that conduit language looks like, the requirements. If you know, these are their requirements from the permit, so you know, hey, if they're not complying, let DOT know and we'll, and we'll get involved.
Thank you.
What's the timeline for that?
Before they start new work. But, um, yeah, I don't have a set timeline right, right now. I'd have to check and see kind of where we stand on some of the language and.
Well, I just want to make that a formal budget request, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, to just, that you're going to report back to us.
Yes.
What that process and language is so that we all know as we move forward and we'll expect it by the end of the calendar year. How does that sound?
That sounds great.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Nate, got that? Thank you. Councilmember Nat?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to lift up, so ADA compliance has been a significant issue related to the condition and the accessibility of sidewalks throughout the city. When I was first elected in 2017, I was told that there was an eight-year backlog on sidewalk repairs at the time. So I was not shocked when the lawsuit came in a few years later pertaining to that. Where are we currently with sidewalk repairs writ large? And also, who on your staff is dedicated to overall ADA compliance citywide?
Yes, so there's a whole lot of layers to that question, so I'll try to be succinct and try to dig into them. So the first thing, there's the sidewalk repairs portion, which falls within the tech division's footways team. So that's more so you've got a panel that's broken or something, or is impacted with tree roots, and so the team has to come in. So obviously, if it's tree roots, we're working with forestry to address the tree concerns, and then we're coming in and doing the repairs. There is a process for that, because as it stands with the city code, the maintenance of sidewalk is actually on the property owner. So there's a whole process, notification process, given the property owner a chance to do the work themselves, or they can resort to the city doing it, and then we go through that process. And so that right there, you're looking at like a two to three-year timeframe from notification to potentially get into the work. Separate from that, then we have the overall new ADA or upgrading of ADA improvements. And so that's what we're doing as a part of our resurfacing. For our internal resurfacing and our external resurfacing, we're upgrading the ramps. If you do more of a street scape type project, then we might be looking at further sections and doing additional work with that. So we are working on, we, we put that into, you know, the budget and requesting additional funds to do more and more of those improvements. We're also looking at ways of trying to use equipment to try to reduce some of that backlog. So some of the issues we have with footways, footways requests might be where there's some type of elevation change with the sidewalk panel. And so there might be anywhere from a half inch to maybe a two-inch lip elevation change. So usually when we get those requests in, initially, maintenance will go, they'll put in some type of asphalt to try to create a little ramp scenario. But we just had a demonstration, I think last week, of a concrete grinder type machine. And so with that, in about 20 minutes, if you have a two-inch lip, you can kind of grind it down to make it level. And so we're evaluating new equipment, new technology, just try to see what we can do, potential equipment we could purchase to then knock this out a little bit sooner. So initially, we might be looking at, see if we can potentially rent some equipment and do like a little pilot and try things out. And if it works well, then that might be an opportunity for us to go through and kind of position a small team, two to three people, just because the equipment needed for it, to then go out and find those type of requests and address those. So we're, we're making great strides with that. And you asked about the staffing, so.
Yeah, just who's in charge of ADA generally.
Yeah, so Valerie LaCour, she is over our ADA division. So she's got some engineers and, and some people there working with her and her team. And then we have the footways team, which is so tender, king and under, within tech division, under Beemel. So it's kind of the two branches.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Torrance and then Con, or Conway and then Torrance.
Oh, wait, do we, we already did Conway? And you're good?
Councilman Torrance, please go.
You good?
All right, just want to make sure. Madam Director, I just want to say thank you for your partnership over the last couple of months with dealing with a number of issues related to footways. I will say, big shout out to Stanley Jacobs, because we've gotten a lot of things in our right of way fixed right away because of you and your team. So I want to shift into problem solving mode. One of the things is, I do know that you do have a meeting with DPW after budget hearing to discuss ways in which we can expand your million paving in-house and probably support it with helping us with repaving, repaving and restoring some of our major water work, water projects. Just for the public's consumption and for the council members, we're facing a large number of repaving and actual restoration costs that we are inheriting because of not only the supply chain, but also many of the contracts on the shelf for our water projects. And I just want to thank you for your courage, your courage to think through this innovative idea so that we can have our two agencies working together to solve this problem. My next question for you is more so the day-to-day operations in terms of leadership in the agency. I say that because I've seen a shift in culture since you've taken over. My question is, what is the next steps for the next three to six months in terms of implementing not only this budget, but preparing for the infrastructure dollars that will be coming your way, as well as the additional highway user funds?
Got it. So appreciate the kudos and it's been great working with you as well. So it's, it's, we're, we're really kind of continuing with where we've, what we've been doing these past couple of months. We've increased our collaboration, we've increased our kind of more in-person huddles. We've been seeing that that's been sparking a lot more creativity and issue resolutions kind of on the spot. We're also creating more cross-functional teams, I'll say. And, and so with. And so with every single, every single division that we're talking about, so the tech and the traffic and all of that, they're all intertwined in all of the funds, all the money that's coming. The planning division is engaged with that as well. So we're all looking at it to then say, if we're coming in with a resurfacing project, for example, what other concerns, what other needs do we have there? If there are potentially some sidewalk needs or concerns, and, and Valerie, instead of having a separate contractor come in and say, well, look, you know, I can devote some of my ADA funds over there, can you all do this additional work as a part of that project? We're doing that. Or the, the planning team or traffic, they're, they're all now getting more actively engaged and looking and seeing what we can add into project to try to have that one type of approach. So that's one of the approaches of us trying to maximize the dollars again. We, we're all very, very excited about fiscal year '24 and what's to come and beyond that. Right now, I'm also focusing on not only filling those holes of the positions, but identifying the staff training needs as well. Training needs, we talked about SOPs, some of those things that don't exist. We brought on a new change manager, someone who also has extensive DHR background as well. And that's, that's one of her key focuses, is looking and finding ways that we need to create SOPs. That will help internally to make sure that the teams are clear on what the process is, can, can follow it. And if it is something that has a timeline associated with it, we can kind of have those timelines and internally hold people accountable to those timelines as well. And then if we see where there's any lags, we can push the button on it. So all of that collectively is going to help us as we move forward in pursuing these additional projects and delivering on the budget overall.
That was a good answer. And the next question is going to be related to.
Oh, Councilman, we're doing a, doing a one-question limit, but we're going to come back to you.
Tried, I tried, I tried.
I applaud you for effort. We're back to, I'm going to pass this around, Councilwoman McCray. Vice President Middleton. And then Councilwoman Porter.
I think just one last, I guess, question or discussion, and that's with the, the Wabash Avenue project. Everyone knows Wabash Avenue is basically starts right there at the, the main project starts there, right there at the light rail and goes on to Northern Parkway. And I know that there, there's been a couple meetings, there's been, you know, groups of opposition. It's a, that street is a very interesting street because it allows trucks, it has homes, it has businesses, and then we have the light rail. I just hope that as you're having these meetings, that you really take time to figure out how you're really going to do the traffic calming versus bicycle lanes. It's, the main issue is the traffic calming. Cars have been hitting homes, it's just been a problem for many years. And I thank you for giving it attention, but I think it's a chance to really be a model of, you know, everything goes on in that area. You know, we've had people killed, we have, we've had pedestrians, you know, killed people on motorcycles, people on bicycles. It's just a very tough area, and I don't want you to rush into how you're, and it's going to take money to really get it right. So I'm hoping that it's a project that's not by a really, a short timeline because it affects several communities in the area, it affects, it affects several districts because it leads into also the fifth district. We just have to be careful of how we're handling that, and, you know, I'd like you to comment on that.
Yeah, no, understood. I, I get all the many facets that are encompassed within that project limits, and, and I agree with you, I don't, excuse me, I don't want to just rush into anything, so I want to make sure we get it right and, and stay engaged with you all, the different districts that are involved and the communities. But Liam has a little bit more information, so I'll let him speak too.
Yeah, I would just say, I was in one of the early planning meetings and your staff was there, Council Vice President Otai was on there, and I know that there was some apprehension about the bike facility aspect. But I had asked the question, you know, is there a desire from communities for traffic calming along the corridor? And everyone was like, yeah, totally. And I think one of the things that's helpful is to kind of also consider how the bike facilities do serve to, as, to a degree as, as a traffic calming tool, along with some other stuff that our traffic division has. And even though it might be a little jarring at first that, those changes, I can say from experience on my side of the city, by Central Avenue, where we recently did some complete streets, traffic calming on Central Avenue, at first it was jarring, but I actually spoke to people in Little Italy and they love it now because they can actually cross Central Avenue much safer than before. So I think sometimes it takes a little bit of time to get used to. And the good, the good thing about a quick build project is it can be changed relatively easily as opposed to a hardscape. So I'll just leave those comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter, then Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I did have one question. We had a few organizations that did their own traffic calming in the district and, hello, Liam. And so you know where I'm going with this question. They did their own traffic calming in the district, and there was some work particularly with BG&E. And so the traffic calming that they had done was, was completely destroyed. What is the process, or is there a process within DOT that reimburses not only that community member or that community organization for the funds that they expended on this traffic calming initiative?
So, and I, if the Director has some more, she can add some. But I know, we had an issue like this on Hartford Road, in a design for social distancing location, and we told BGE, the rules are restored to previous condition, period. So if there's traffic calming there that's damaged, it needs to be put back, period.
So the proper protocol is going to BG&E to restore? Okay.
So, and, and just to add, is, is if the community is working with BGE and things are going fine, or whoever it is, and things are going fine, great. The, the time that we really kind of just get involved is just if we need to help facilitate communication. So if you're seeing where they're not getting, they're not being responsive or anything like that, then that's where we can get engaged from that standpoint because they are supposed to restore, there is the impact.
Thank you, Director. And which, who from DOT should we be connecting with?
So it's. Valerie? Okay, there you go.
Oh.
Valerie has the answer.
The lady of the hour.
So under the street cuts regulations, if a community has put in art or any kind of traffic calming in, within their neighborhood, and a utility provider comes in and either affects it, destroys it, or completely removes it, under street cuts regulations, that utility provider is required to put it back in the way it was. So you would reach out to Stanley Jacobs in the street cut section, make sure he has the location, and he will follow up and make sure that it happens.
Okay, thank you so much. And just to reiterate, Stanley Jacobs?
We'll, we'll give you his information.
Okay, thank you so much. And also, I'm so sorry. Ma'am, I do have a follow-up. Can we actually get that in writing as well? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer?
Director, how much money did DOT request in ARPA dollars?
It was just under 75 million.
That was your total request?
Yes.
Okay, and how much did you guys get?
From those requests specifically, zero. Now during this budget cycle, there was the recommendation to provide about 27 million of ARPA, 10 million for resurfacing and 17 for ADA.
I'm sorry, you confused me. You said that was in the budget or that's ARPA dollars that?
Those were ARPA dollars that.
Hang on one second, just for clarification, the sum total of 27 that she's referring to, 10 for resurfacing and 17 for ADA, that was in the last tranche of the 80 million that was just announced a couple of days ago, the 27 total that she's referring to.
So you got 27 million in the past few days? Is that right? Is that what you said?
I can, well, I can answer. So that 27 million was actually included as a part of the CIP process. So it wasn't just announced a few days ago, but it was added at the, as we began planning for the CIP for this year.
Well, hang on, wasn't the, the 27 was included in the CIP, but it wasn't funded until the announcement was made to shift the 80 million?
Well, technically, yes.
Right, so just, just to be clear.
Yes.
The, the 27 million, and you all correct me if I got this wrong, DOT is being appropriated, DOT, let me start over. DOT will have $27 million to spend, 10 for resurfacing, 17 for ADA, which was programmed in the CIP, but the funding source of that was not announced until a couple of days ago.
Yes, sir, that's accurate.
Thank you.
And the funding source of that is ARPA.
ARPA, thank you.
Gotcha. And I assume we'll see that full picture when we get the list of, of the final list of ARPA dollars where all that, the final 80 million went?
Yes, you'll get that, you'll get that information, but it also is included in the CIP as well.
Councilman, the ARPA-funded, or the projects that are anticipated in the capital budget that will be funded out of ARPA are listed on page 203 of the executive summary of the budget document.
Yeah, I saw this, okay. As far as, Director, the tow yard, I know you had, you had mentioned, you had spoken about it a little bit in, in your presentation, but something that's, that's bothered me for a long time is that we have these requirements of private companies that they all have to keep their yard open 24/7 so that people can get their cars back because without their cars, they can't get to work, they can't do what they got to do. But yet, the city-run and owned yard is not 24/7, it's quite far from being 24 or 7. And so is that something that you're looking at expanding and making that equitable so that if somebody's car is towed by Baltimore City, they're not just out of luck for extended periods of time?
I don't believe there's been any conversations about having the city's tow yards go to 24 hours as of yet. I'd have to talk with the staff a little bit more to see if there has been discussions and any details surrounding that.
Gotcha. Okay.
Do, do we have a sense of what the deferred maintenance is on our, on our DOT employees for areas where, sorry, do we have a sense of what the deferred maintenance is on DOT facilities for areas that employees use, such as restrooms, locker rooms? I know this was an issue that came up last year with the tow yard.
Yes, so we've been working to look through and kind of better evaluate the facilities and get feedback on some of those concerns that are existing. Some of those, some of the work orders and things, concerns that were raised have been addressed. And then there's, of course, other things that require more time and effort. We, we've made, we're continuing to make some improvements. The, let me see, of course, you know, we're talking about 6700 Pulaski, you know, there are issues there, but we've made accommodations to relocating staff to other locations like on 33 South Gay Street. And then we also have some staff at Calvert. So while there's facilities or locations that are in disrepair, then we've made accommodations to make sure the staff are in an adequate and safe space. And we just continue to work through whatever efforts we can do internally, as well as working with DGES on any facility needs that we need their assistance with.
Thank you. Mr. President, and then Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How are you doing today?
Doing well, how are you?
Good to see you. Quick question, did we, have we addressed the conduit division and the 53 positions that were removed? Have we talked about that yet? I'm just coming.
Not, not, not those positions specifically, no. We talked about our conduits.
So I know that there was 53 vacant positions that were moved from the Conduit Enterprise Fund because they're no longer needed based off the BG&E deal. The assumption is that DOT is still keeping the same amount of staff because the staff number didn't necessarily decrease. Could you kind of go over just the personnel plan associated with those positions and next steps around that?
Yes, so we went through and did an evaluation of both our city staff and our consultant staff to find out what we needed to retain, what we potentially couldn't fund, and what options existed. So we went through, I'll say from a consultant standpoint, and any positions we felt like we didn't need anymore, then we gave notice that come the new fiscal year, we wouldn't continue funding them. There are some positions that we reduced to part-time and made some other accommodations. For the city positions, again, we've protected all the positions. I've been having, just actually just this week, had a town hall with the staff again to kind of give them the update. We have a small handful of staff, they're going to be reassigned to other DOT divisions, so they'll still stay within the agency. We have some of the CDO drivers, which we all know, we need CDO drivers, so that'll be a direct benefit to our other divisions that are going to be receiving them. We have an engineer position that is going to be reallocated, and the good news is we have a vacancy in the traffic division, so that person's going to be going to the traffic division to then further help with our traffic calming needs there. And then there's some other positions, like an accountant, some others as well, they're going to be moving. So we're making those adjustments for the staff that we can pull away and just kind of continuing to evaluate it. So the people that are remaining, they're still going to be gainfully employed and still have work to do. So even though they won't be inspecting the work that DOT's contractors will be doing, they will be inspecting the work that BGE is doing and the other entities that are out there doing any work on our conduit system because that was to occur. Also, we will still have our field services team that is doing our maintenance. So we have laborers and CDO drivers that are going to be going out there and doing some of the obstructions and slugging and things of the conduit system itself in-house. So there's still various work needs of the division, as well as those that are going to be reviewing the design plans and the work that, of the plans that BGE is submitting and that we're approving via the permit process.
Understood. Now, while we're maintaining the same level of, I guess, workforce, like looking at the budget book, and I'm not sure if BB and Mark can help us out here, but I see the performance measure targets have decreased even though we have the same level of staff. Is there any reason to kind of understand that? Is that part of the BG&E deal? Would you, can you make a correlation there or not? Laura? I'm sorry, you didn't hear me?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I would defer that response to the, the DOT team regarding the metrics.
Okay, just try to make a correlation between staff, you know, personnel and the performance measures.
So I'd have to, what I, what might be best, if you don't mind, if I, if I look at that, go back and look at it, and then we can provide a response back to you. I know, you know, we're, from a standpoint of the staffing, it's a little bit different of what we, what we're directly doing versus what we were directly doing in the past, that might be a part of it, but I'd want to dig into it and.
So you're saying that this might be a one-year blip because you're trying to evaluate how the new spread of the personnel is going to impact the performance?
Yeah, and I know there was that transition period of us trying to get the information for the budget book and then going through the whole BG&E arrangement, and then even us working through now because obviously they're not, they haven't started yet, you know, so I'm not sure exactly what point, how soon they're physically going to start doing work on the ground. So that could be a factor as well.
Got it. Now, also, when we talk about, just again, staying on performance, in the, in the budget book, it says that DOT is decreasing its target for cable removal and installation inspections. Just being naive at it, the expectation is it would probably go up because now we have kind of additional resources to do other things. Is that not the case? And if not, why has that decreased? Is that something else you want to come back and evaluate?
Could you just repeat the question?
Yeah, so like when you look at the, the number of performance targets, the target for cable removal and installation inspections has decreased. My assumption is, based off of the BG&E deal, knowing that folks are now freed up from specifically tied to conduit, that inspections would have probably increased. And knowing that, you know, we need to increase inspection, so just trying to. So just trying to understand the performance numbers in, in the book.
Yeah, not sure what the intent was with that reduction.
Yeah.
However, the, the need to perform the inspections for cable installation and vacating should still. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's driven by the, the lessees and their facilities, but if they're performing rehabilitative efforts, the likelihood is that they'll either remain the same or likely increase.
Yeah, so my expectation is going into this is we were going to kind of enhance our level of inspections. You know, particularly knowing that, you know, in recent years, we've seen some major incidents that I don't know if could have been stopped by more inspections or not, but it just seems like, I don't know if there's a certain level of additional due diligence that we could do from an inspection perspective with the freed-up personnel to kind of go after and do those things. So, Director, you don't have to answer it now, but if you guys could go back and kind of look at the performance numbers, definitely interested in, in kind of understand. I know that during the, the BGE deal, we talked in length about ensuring that we were protecting those positions in DOT and kind of, I guess, the, the methodology around how we would deploy those resources moving forward. So really interested in kind of understanding that.
Okay, and the one thing I did notice is that for that output, the fiscal year 23 target was 175, and so it's maintained in here for 24. So whatever change occurred, it really occurred from 22 to 23.
Yeah.
So we, we might have to go back further just to see what prompted that at that point.
Or, or also just really try to, I guess, come up with the justification is why isn't that going to increase? Like the expectation again is the performance would increase, but maybe you have a, a really solid reason as to why, yeah.
Thank you.
Um.
Mr. President, we imposed a one-question rule while you were.
All right. I just got one, one more question, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No deference. This is one question that we've asked all major departments that come here, so it's not a DOT problem, this is kind of a city-wide problem, but when we talk about vacancies, from a Department of Transportation, I think you guys currently have about 230 vacancies. The real interesting number is of which 56 have been vacant for 24 months or more, right? So when we talk about growing positions throughout the city, there's a major concern, and if we haven't been able to fill a position in 24, 26, 28, 32 months, what's the likelihood that we're going to be able to fill it over the next 12 months? So trying to identify, one, what are those positions? And then, two, what's the likelihood that we're going to be able to try to fill them? So just like I've done with all the other agencies, we'll provide you with what we have, and you guys can kind of stay and compare and tell us, you know, if there is some level of expectation, if it's actively being pursued to be filled or not.
Will do. Just to give a quick summary of our vacancies, there are like 26 that are officially frozen. We have the ones from conduit, the 55 or so that are like on hold because we're not going to fill them right now. But earlier I mentioned that we have 73, that we're currently in the active hiring process, meaning we've had interviews, we're working on offers, we're working on getting the acceptance, or going through the process of actually getting them to start. So, and then you have another 50 that are our crossing guard vacancies. So when you break through, go through all of that and get down to eliminating those, that leaves us with about 169 vacancies. Now, we're still, some of what I'm looking at is those long-term hard-to-fill vacancies. Of course, our TEOs, our traffic school stallers, and some other positions and transportation associates. So some of what, and these are just recent conversations that we're looking into, is trying to see if, if at a certain classification, if it's hard to fill the position because it requires a certain level of experience to even get in that lower-level position? And if there's a, if there's an option to potentially look at some of those positions, if we could downgrade to where you really more so need more of a high school diploma or GED or something? And then if we can try to do some type of partnership with schools and kind of via some type of a community aid program, get them a little bit of experience, and then see if they would be interested in getting into some of these traffic positions? Because really, the traffic arena, it's, it's a technical area, it's hard to find people. And we found that that's one of the areas we found a lot of vacancies. And so if we could try to create some type of relationship and pipeline with some of the local schools, then that might help to help us fill some positions and get people gainfully employed. So we're trying to be creative and find ways of getting these vacancies filled. But some of it is evaluating those hard-to-fill ones and then looking if we need to reclassify into another type of position to fill it where we need it, knowing that we're really having challenges filling it, so.
Okay, well, we'll make sure we give you the positions, and if you could just do that evaluation. And then last thing about a position, I guess, has, has your confirmation package been completed?
I'm not involved in that.
Have you provided all the information for your confirmation package? Is, is the confirmation package going to be one of the ones that we expect to see soon from the administration?
We are actively working on it.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I look, yep, I'm coming to you next. I look forward to voting in support of you once that nomination package is completed.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we're going to go Councilman Conway and then Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to follow up on a question Mr. President brought up regarding the staffing. I, I understand you guys are trying to do more apprenticeship-type models and working with our schools. I've been trying to do some digging into that, that effort broadly across the city and for our service agencies, DOT, DGS, and it's, I understand it right now, it's sort of living in no man's land. No one's really managing the program. I, I understand there's someone in DOT who knows a little bit about it. I tried calling her, haven't heard back yet. Who, who's managing that program right now?
So I'm, I'm not sure who specifically you're referring to.
I'll tell you in a second.
Okay, yeah, if you could give me a name, that can, that can help. But, but again, I'd be glad to talk with you a little bit more. Really, looking at work comp and having some, some strategic staffing, HR-type of conversations with me and my chief of staff, Nick, HR manager, and trying to come up with some solutions to help key divisions and try to get these positions filled. So definitely any ideas you have, I'd love to meet and talk and hear about it. And who were the persons that you've been working with? Bring them along as well.
I haven't been working with it yet, I've been trying to get in touch with it.
Okay.
Ms. Beverly Wolford.
Okay, well, I'll bring in, I'll bring in Nick. So Nick, Nick's his, her supervisor, so.
Oh, great.
We'll bring Nick in.
Great. Um, I would, I think there's definitely more work than we need to do in the pipeline. Certainly, we can try and hire people into jobs right now, but the reality is just the ability to attract people in these positions without the skill set is just really tough.
Yes.
So the more that we can do to work with our high schools and making sure they're prepared in the high school system, even more providing internships or otherwise apprenticeships, I think are really low-hanging fruit for us to prime the pump. And so we've been doing some work and committee on that, on the public safety side. I think we should be doing everything we can on, on the service side for our other agencies as well. The other question I had, and this is my actual question, Mr. Chair, I was just following up. So it's not two questions.
So, all right, so we're, so we're, everyone's getting stretched out. We're going to really tighten this up during school. Before you get to, I'm going to give you your question. Council Vice President had a follow-up, and you're a follow-up to the President's question. Council Vice President?
So just kind of a follow-up and a little bit of history, and I guess this kind of helps with the new council members as well. You have to remember that Baltimore City was the first city in the country to start apprenticeship programs with government, with, with city government. And DPW, Water and Wastewater, has a very good model of an apprenticeship program that every agency can follow to their, to their liking. I kind of bring this up almost every time, and I can help any way. As a past director of the State of Maryland's apprenticeship system, Baltimore City, that one program has just been a model around this, this state as well. And it just takes, you can get lots of information from our present Labor Commissioner because she was part of that, because she's been around a while and she knows a lot about that program. Housing has started their inspector program basically from that model, and they, you know, created more housing inspectors. So I think those are people that you should reach out to to get that model. It's a way you can really hone in on in-house training for laborers. It's a good model from, from ASME. You can also get, you know, they learned from Baltimore City and use that program in other areas around the whole country. So we need to really think about those past things and really try to enhance and go back and, and use those models. There still is the state apprenticeship system, which the city is also a part of. They also give out fun, funds to help with those, creating that program. They have people that are specifically hired and one that can work with you for free. That person is hired, that, that's their job. They're assigned to Baltimore City to work with any agency to create an apprenticeship program. It's a free service, the whole model, and once you're connected with the state, you get a state, that person gets a state certification that's almost like a college degree that they can use around the country. But the key is that it, it starts here and you're creating your own pipeline. And with the way things are, you know, I'm hearing that, you know, 40 people are retiring every month from city government, and a lot of them are, you know, our laborer employees. This is a, a way that we can regroup and, you mentioned, you know, connecting with high schools. All that is, is just so important. We have the building trades that are doing that, but we need to pick up and do our own thing. And it just takes one person in your office to, you, you can assign to have that responsibility.
Okay, no, thank you very much for all of that, I appreciate that insight, you know, so you did a little education for me on that. So, yeah, we will be in contact.
And I think there was a gentleman, I, I don't know if he retired yet. Michael Alexander was, he had been working on, he was the person, at least for like 30 years, in charge of that connection with, with the state. I don't know if they filled his position yet, he's a recent retiree. So that's something else you can find out from the Labor Commissioner as well. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Council Vice President. Councilman Conway?
I'm going to shoot a fastball because I see the chair looking at me. So very simply, one of the major issues we have is around street lighting. Specifically, we're, we're replacing a lot of our old lights and incandescent bulbs to update to LED. I've got neighborhoods on the east side of my district that haven't had those replacements yet, and some neigh, some neighborhoods that have a mixture of both lights. I'd love to know what the timeline is for replacement of the incandescent bulbs to LED bulbs and what our plan is just over, over the whole city.
All right, thank you for that question. Kendall, would you be to speak to that a little bit more, please?
Good afternoon, Councilman. Most of those conversions were done as a part of previous plans, like the Be More Bright program, which were done in phases. Of course, the plan no longer exists. So we've been just looking for opportunities to replace lights when resources are available. So we're pretty much at that point right now.
Thank you. And do, do we need funding? Do we have funding, or is that just now our regular bulb replacement pot of money is?
I think the Director just mentioned previously that money is always good. So if we could get more money, of course, I don't have all the details, but we just were awarded a grant to get some fixtures through another program. So we're looking at every opportunity that's available to us to make sure that we can get these lights changed out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance.
Oh, just a, just one follow-up on that. So I think the thing that we are trying to be pretty thoughtful about as an administration is all the available grant funding that is out there now with inflation reduction, the IIJA, obviously we have ARPA, and so we're trying to get very creative about braiding funding sources to be able to provide funding to our operational agencies like a DOT. And so for us, I think, looking at the, looking at IIJA to see if there are grant opportunities where we might be able to get some additional support for lighting for DOT is a priority for us.
I, I, that's phenomenal, and I would say there are also some neighborhoods that just don't have like pedestrian lighting, that safety is a real issue because.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I would love to keep that in the same conversation as.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Torrance?
I can have more than one, correct? One.
Thank you, Madam Director. I had a similar conversation with, so my next question is a direct follow-up to this. I have a number of pedestrian lights that have not been replaced in over a year. So I just want to go back to our oversight here in Manhattan where we in request the current number of lights that we have to replace going into this current, next fiscal year, the amount that we actually have in inventory now. And I'm, and for the public's reference, I'm referring to the actual poles, because we have the fixture, we just don't have the actual poles. So I want to know how are we going to address the outstanding, but also be thinking forward in terms of supply chain, accounting for the number that we know more than likely we're going to have? Case in point, I lost nine lights in one year around Drew Park Lake Drive. So I just want to make sure in my residential neighborhoods where there are several lights that are still missing, where are we in terms of citywide, the number outstanding to be replaced? And then how are we proactively acquiring more poles to ensure that we are keeping up with the demand that we have on average over the last three fiscal years?
Okay, so, yeah, we can follow up with that data, and I don't know if Kendall has anything else to share, but I guess one of the things I know that we've been pushing for is anytime entities or whoever's coming in and trying to install new pedestrian lighting, we're being very cognizant of the materials, the type of pole, because we want to make sure that it's something that we know that we're going to be able to procure and we're going to be able to maintain versus certain other type of fixtures are going to be more challenging. So we're trying to also have those conversations that if someone maybe is coming in doing their project and they have a certain type of fixture, they can try to get some additional fixtures or poles in the process of that project so that we can kind of have them on storage for those replacements. Kendall, is there anything else you want to add when it comes to our pedestrian lighting?
Just to add, we've, we've been seeing some progress being made in the way of acquiring poles and other material that's needed. Just to give an example, during the tariff that President Trump imposed, it slowed down progress and us being able to procure some of those poles combined with COVID as well. So we're, we're coming out of that and starting to see some progress in terms of getting those materials.
All right, my next question. I'll make it a quick one. I would like to see the traffic calming strategy for West Baltimore, related because I have a number of traffic calming outstanding requests in neighborhoods, which are, most of the requests are speed bumps as well as calming in particularly black neighborhoods that are very close to each other. Is there a way that we can maximize a dollar and do multiple neighborhoods at one time, especially when they're feeding into each other in terms of traffic?
So for the, so if it's speed humps alone, most towns were doing the speed humps in-house. If it's other type of improvements that were, say, using a contractor, I'm not sure if it's necessarily going to be really a cost savings necessarily to try to do multiple neighborhoods at the time, it's just a matter of getting it all out there. But we can definitely look and see what are the, what's out there from a traffic, from a traffic calming standpoint for that West Baltimore, for those different areas. If there's, I don't know if there's, I don't, yeah, we'll probably have to just follow up with that most likely. I don't know.
We have, yeah, and we have a list of speed hump locations for this year. We can definitely submit.
Yeah, we can follow up with the data.
I just want to make sure, because it looks real nice in northeast Baltimore right now in terms of speed humps.
Sorry, sorry. Yes, we'll get you, we'll get that information to you all.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is sort of a follow-up on an issue that my colleague, Councilman Dorsey, raised with DPW around resurfacing of concrete streets and the need for additional funding for that. And apologies if I speak out of turn, Chair Costello, but one in particular immediately comes to mind, the Highway to Nowhere. And I'll thank you all because last year, I hit one of the potholes and sent my wife into labor. A year later, just for good measure, I hit the same one just to like, you know, bring back those amazing memories. But we have, we have these throughout, and some on Old Frederick Road and other parts of the city. What are we doing, I guess, through the CIP process or other funding sources to be able to tackle those projects, which are, admittedly, I do understand are a little bit more complicated than simply a more of an asphalt resurfacing project?
Yes, so those are more major reconstruction-type of projects versus our typical. Yes, so those are more major reconstruction type of projects versus our typical resurfacing efforts. So where you see the resurfacing dollars in there, the amount per sector, that is literally just asphalt. Um, we are, we, we did include and request, um, additional dollars for this, this fiscal year for concrete roadways. We can, we will continue to do that, especially with the upcoming HUR dollars and, and at our fiscal years. And so especially situations where we can again leverage the 80% federal for our 20% local. That's gonna stretch those dollars. Um, I know that, uh, from a trucking quarter standpoint, Kirk Avenue is one of those that, um, greatly needs some attention and that was included in there as well. Um, you know, I, I've been trying to, I guess, also build relationships with any, any industry. You know, the thing about, we talk about local dollars, is it had to just come from the city? It can come from different sources. So also trying to work on build relationships to see if there's others that would be able to, um, support a project effort and contribute any type of dollar value towards that local match. So we are prioritizing that and putting that into the budget. I plan to put more of it in fiscal year 25 and beyond. Um, so there was some improvement for this year, I can say that, but we, we are working towards that.
Yeah, and, um, to, I think the director hit the nail on the head. As, uh, July 1, so FY24 is, is the first year of that step increase of HUR and then it's kind of continues to scale up over the next few years. I know, um, in previous years, we were averaging concrete slab repair, uh, $800,000 annually, um, which is like nothing when you consider, uh, concrete streets while they last longer, they're twice as expensive as your traditional asphalt. Um, so a lot of the concrete streets we see around the city are original to when they were first put in probably 60, 70 years ago.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Service 688, snow. We didn't have any. So what happened to that? Uh, what happens to the money with, um, in the snow removal pot when we don't have snow?
So even though we have, say, light winters where we don't maybe physically have the typical snow, if we have snow events where we're still having to mobilize and do brine or do any type of minimal treatment or having staff on board, there's still that cost associated with it. So, uh, you know, so there obviously is some of the money that goes towards that. Um, I will turn towards finance to speak to the remaining money, like what happens to the remaining, if we don't hit the full mark.
Right, because I think we just literally had one event where you all had to be on the roads. So.
Um, so at the end of the year, um, you know, we'll do our closeout actions. And sometimes if there is, uh, that, the, any surplus that can be found in like agency budgets could be used to cover, uh, and be used for supplemental actions around budget. So for example, within DOT, if let's say they don't have snow actions, but there was a deficit in another area, the surplus in snow could be helped to cover that, um, or would be used to cover other actions or be surplus and for supplemental.
So that'll come before us, basically, the, the 7 million or whatever?
Certain actions would. There are some that would be related, that would just go to BOE and some that would go to BOE and council.
Right, so we, but you'll get back to us as to like what?
Yeah, as we do closeout, we'll be able to report out on that.
Okay, so after the closeout, so July 1 and first quarter, right? I mean, you usually don't do full closeout until like October or whatever. Then we would know kind of what that.
Report out, yeah.
What that looks like. But does it only, so if it's an internal transfer, it's an, it's internal or, or is it? I'm just trying to figure out, what are the options? So one is that it's an internal transfer that, that only goes before BOE. The other is that it would be a supplemental that would go to a completely different agency. That comes to us. Yes. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCray? Councilman Schleifer?
Director, how long does, uh, do you guys have to fix like a sidewalk or an ADA ramp after DOT, after, um, after BGE rips it up?
So per the Street Cuts policy, um, they are given 120 days, um, recognizing, you know, the winter weather, there's kind of like a pause for that. So obviously certain things that it takes more time just because of the temperatures. But really it's 120 days. So if there, if we're alerted that there's a location or we, or we inspect and find that there's a location that's beyond that, then we will assess fines and, and put them on notice and.
So, yeah, that's what I want to clarity on. So, because when I've, I've have a location in my district, Fallstaff and Clark's, it's in front of the Meyerberg Senior Center that has been torn up for a lot longer than that. There's also, uh, senior assisted living right next door to it. And so I've seen people trip on that multiple times. I've put into 311 multiple times and I've reached out to BGE multiple times. They have said every single time that you guys are responsible for fixing it, not them. So who, who is responsible for that?
What was, what was the nature of the work?
I mean, they, they dug it up for some work. They painted over the asphalt that it's, they wrote BGE on it. Uh, I've sent them pictures a bunch of times and they said, no, it's DOT. So then I put into 311 multiple times. I've reached out about that location. It's far past 120 days.
So let's do this. Uh, Councilman, can you get the specific locations in email over to the director? And Liam, um, you guys can route it as appropriate. Can you have those locations, um, checked with right away division to see who did the work? Have those locations inspected and cited as appropriate? And then follow up with the council member early next week?
Will do.
So my question is like, who's, why are we responsible for that?
So it depends on what the work is apparently. So if it's a, um.
It's a new street light.
Exactly. So if it is a street light, then the way that it's set up with the whole maintenance agreement with BGE is that they do the lighting repairs itself and then they will put in that temporary asphalt or something that they do. And then the actual sidewalk repair restoration is supposed to be on DOT. The problem is that, um, I'm finding that historically, there really wasn't a clear process, communication process, notification or anything. And so that's what we're working on now to have that communication and then to look within, um, the maintenance team for what they can repair and, and patch up and restore themselves versus do we need to have some type of a contractor to come back and do that?
So, so if we can make that committee request, just to get the scope of what you guys are responsible for versus what they're responsible for? I'm not gonna get into all the terms of the deal because I'm sure we got the, the wrong end of it. But according to BGE, the emails they sent me, that any work within a sidewalk, that you guys do the sidewalk repairs. So it's the first I'm hearing that it's only streetlights. So if we can just get that like laid out in an email so that we know what's what and then find out the nature of the work?
Will do.
Thank you.
Perfect. Nate, you got that? Thank you, sir. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have we had a chance to talk about light synchron?
We did briefly, but.
Uh, just real quick, just point a note, um, I, I know, um, Councilman Torrance talked about some, uh, traffic calming in, uh, West Baltimore. But synchronization, particularly on West North Avenue, um, Emerson Avenue and Martin Luther King, uh, in West Baltimore, uh, so I don't know if there's any active studies or anything you can kind of illustrate to us today?
Yes, so we of course started, um, this spring, here in March, our, um, citywide traffic signal optimization project. That is a three-year project. Right now, they've started with data collection. The data collection is what's gonna take the most amount of the time, uh, most of the work, um, for the contract just because they're literally going onsite observing, getting counts, getting the cabinets and all of that. So they started with, um, South Baltimore, that data collection, um, is, is complete? They're still working completing it? Yeah, I think they're still, they're still working completing the, the data collection for South Baltimore. And then, thank you. And then, um, and then they'll go on to the data evaluation and then start and potentially like basically through the end of the year to make some changes in that area. And then they're gonna be starting in the CBD, um, and doing the data collection and then the next phase. So it's gonna become a phased approach. Um, so there's, uh, we have about 1,400 signals throughout the city and this effort includes about 1,100 of those.
Is there any way for council members to track, uh, when they should expect, uh, for the data collection to come through the area and is it an overall schedule and, and game plan?
Um, I don't know if we, I'm not sure of the level of detail of the scheduling plan, but we can, um, check into that.
If you could just let us know.
Provide and we'll, we'll, we can get that to you all.
William said we can, we should be able to get that to you.
All right, cool. Thank you. And, um, that's specific to each council member, you know, per the district, right? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam VP, good. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. Um, I've asked, we have a lot of speed humps going in a lot of places. We have a complete streets policy. We hear a lot about being committed to safety and accessibility, but every single standard speed hump that goes in on any street at all becomes an impediment to cycling. We are, they are actively making cycling worse in the city by going in with a design that is not a bicycle friendly based design. I have asked repeatedly for DOT to adopt a policy of installing bike friendly speed humps. And I've gotten answers, multiple answers. One being, we just don't know how to build them in terms of our labor in-house actually able to do that. But then later I've been told, no, we're totally capable, we can do that. All we actually need is a design to be given to the maintenance division for how to do it. And then told, we're totally capable of this, we can work on this, but I haven't seen anything. And speed humps keep going in without a bike, bike friendly design. It's making cycling worse in the city. When will we get this corrected?
Okay, so, um, I haven't been engaged in those conversations with that. So I can definitely talk with both the traffic division and the maintenance team to kind of figure out exactly where those issues exist. If it is a training component or if it's a standard, we need to develop a standard and then have training, then we can try to sort through that and figure out any of those potential challenges. Um, so I can't necessarily say when, just because I need to look into it, but I'll, I'll commit to doing that.
Can I get an answer on any aspect of this? Like, when can a design be given to maintenance?
I don't, I don't know right now. I'd have to look.
How, can I ask our traffic division chief or our engineers how long they think it'll take to come up with the design?
So, but, but still, I would like to get engaged with it and kind of understand the concerns on both sides. So, and I don't want them to just try to push forward in creating a design and, and it may not be the best one. So I, I'd really rather them not speak on that, um, just to give me a chance to get engaged on it.
But this, this is a standard traffic feature, like in a lot of places. This is not like inventive. This is something that like, can't take more than a couple of hours to actually design. I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand like, I, it, it can't take that much. What, when's a reasonable timeline for me to expect that a bike friendly speed hump design can be in hand? There has to be, you have to be able to give me some sort of reasonable timeline.
I, I really can't right now. I mean, I, I'll, I could say a month, but that's without having any, you know, and it, it might be a draft form. I don't know. Um, I don't want to commit to it and then not be able to deliver to you.
Mr. Chair, is there a reasonable timeline that I could place on requesting that DOT actually produce a design that can be used for, for bike friendly speed humps?
I'm not a transportation engineer, so what I would say is, Director, can you commit to circling back to the councilmen with a status update by say, um, July 31st?
Will do.
Thank you very much. All right.
Can I, can I get one more?
Nope. We're gonna come right back to you though. Councilman Schleifer, you're good? You're good. Um, who's next? Conway? Coming right back to you, Councilman Dorsey, I promise.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um.
Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Please be brief. Thank you.
Oh, I will. Um, give me one second.
Come back to you in a minute. Councilman Torrance?
I just have a committee request. The 2100 block of Park Avenue, I need to know when the, I don't know if it's Crown Castle or us, but the lights need to come back on. That's it.
That's all. That was simple. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Ramos. Oh, you're ready, Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
Thank you. Um, a lot, a lot of folks in my district have issues with streets messing up their vehicles. Um, I, I'm curious what we can do about street repairs. I'm also very curious about our, um, internal and external lane miles paved per year. Um, maybe this is a request that you guys can get back to us on. But for the past five years, what are the internal lane miles paved and the external lane miles paved? Is that something you guys can provide?
Okay, so, so. To make sure I understand, you want to know past five years, what we've done from an internal resurfacing standpoint? What we've done from an external resurfacing standpoint?
By year, yes.
Okay, we can do that.
Let's make that a data request. Is that right, Councilman?
Yes.
Yep. Anything else you had to clarify that, Councilman, or are you good?
I think that covers it. Thank you.
Thank you, outstanding. Councilwoman Ramos?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have to say, I'm like, I'm really excited about the increase in HUR. So, um, look forward to staying in touch with all of you about that. Um, because we've got to be able to show our successes because then we have to go back and get some more money. Um, I have a question not related to that. Um, uh, special events staff, um, Director Abbott Cole is really phenomenal. Um, last year, after an incident in the sixth district, um, which I was in, I was in that, um, in that, uh, at that event, uh, we, um, needed more staff and more staff was transferred to her office in order to accommodate all of the great events happening. Um, and so I'm wondering if those transfers are still there? And, um, you know, we need to at least get her some additional assistance, I think, in the, um, special events office. Um, it, related to that is just making sure that all of the, there's that communication. I know there's the Calm meetings that happen. Um, uh, but we, we've just got to make sure that we've got the right person in each, um, in each of the agencies to attend to those because we had an issue where, um.
We got, Director, can you address the staffing issue?
Sure. So yeah, so within that division or that team, um, we have five full-time employees. Um, we have a mayor's higher up employee working with us, an additional committee aide, and then we have another employee on loan. So we have, like you said, brought, tried to bring in some additional resources. I realize that's probably still too little, you know, we're sort of trying to figure out ways of kind of staffing up and trying to help from a resource standpoint. And then of course, we're working with other agencies on just trying to, um, improve the overall special events process. So, you know, um.
So she kept the additional resources that you gave her and then, and you're staying with that right now? And then you're gonna figure out the next steps in terms of getting her more resources?
Well, yeah, because I'm, I'm of course digging into special events and so many other areas as far as resources. So that's some of kind of what's toling around in my head as far as what we can do in some of those areas.
All right. Councilman Torrance, you got a direct, quick follow up on that?
I just have a quick follow up. Um, a briefing to see if we can reevaluate our actual pricing model for special events, especially for corporations, movie films. They shouldn't pay the same rate as someone who lives on the same block. We should be thinking about how much we can capture in revenue. That's it.
So a briefing within two months.
Does that work for you, Director?
On both of those items.
Okay, so briefing in two months for a special event specifically? Okay.
That works for you, Director?
We'll make it work.
Thank you. Glover, do you have anything? Middleton, you good?
Thank you. Uh, we were at, uh, Burnett, oh, no. Burnett, you're good. President? And then Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, um, obviously, um, not a fan of the Bgini deal. We've gone through that over and over. But since we're here, despite it, um, the dig once policy, um, what are the things that are in place moving forward? Um, policies, procedures, uh, uh, systems that have been created to ensure that, um, you know, we, we're not overstepping and, and having a conflict?
Yeah, so no, there's a, um, there is a lot of coordination right now. We have, um, some internal coordination, um, I think on a monthly basis with, um, one of our teams is digging into our projects in coordination with BBD, PBD, DPW and, um, and other entities. And then we also have utility coordination meetings. Um, although it's outdated, it has limitations. We're still also using our InVista system to look for any conflicts. So the resurfacing team and others of reconstruction, when we're planning projects, we're looking in there for any conflicts and then having those communications to try to anticipate any other type of work. There have been instances where we have, um, delayed projects and tried to allow and kind of get, get things a little, little more synergy with the timelines of the projects to incorporate work and meet that one dig policy. Um, I know recently even, um, I had personally been engaged, um, a little while back, we were having, um, biweekly to monthly meetings with Vicinity where they were doing a steam project right here on, um, Coward Street, right by Mercy Hospital. And so, um, and also DPW has water, like, water main project going through there as well. So we organized some meetings and, and had this coordination with them and Mercy and worked in certain maintenance of traffic requirements and time of work requirements to accommodate Mercy and their needs and, and the entire corridor. So that one, we worked on trying to phase the project a little bit more and, and it's been a great approach. So mostly what we're seeing where we have projects and then someone comes in there and unfortunately cuts or something after the fact. And I'm saying most, not saying there's something that has to be slipped through the trap. And I'm saying most, not saying there's something that has to be slipped through the track, slipped through the cracks. But in most cases, we're finding where it's some of that emergency type of work, gas leaks or water line breaks or something like that. So it, things that we unfortunately couldn't anticipate. But that coordination is happening and we're still pushing, trying to replace that InVista system to help with that as well.
So Madam Director, we feel adequately, adequately equipped to effectively try to go down the dig once policy even with the new relationship with BGNI?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
If it is lightning quick?
Yes. Two, the dig once policy related is fines for improper cuts. We, we have a number of issues like that that I see all the time. How are we managing that and is there anything we can do to make sure that folks are held accountable when they do bad cuts?
So we are holding them accountable. So that's our street cuts team. So just like we talked about that before, they're inspecting those locations. And so if there's anything that doesn't meet the requirements of the street cuts policy, if it's a failed temporary patch, if it's, they're beyond the 120 days, if it's anything that's top, within that street cuts policy, they are inspecting. We have a small team, but they're very active. They're inspecting, they're issuing fines, we're holding them accountable. So we're doing as much enforcement as we can with the team we have.
I appreciate your, your continued vigilance on that.
Yes.
Thank you. Middleton, then Dorsey.
I guess just quick, do you, are you still in charge of crossing guards?
Yes.
Okay, are, are you hiring anymore? Are there prob?
Yep, we have vacancies. I think I said we had about 50 or so crossing guard vacancies, I believe.
So there's a problem, so you're trying to find crossing guards?
Yes.
Okay.
We're hiring.
And it's just elementary and middle school?
Is that, is that correct? Elementary, middle school?
High schools don't have crossing guards?
Correct.
Other.
That, that's correct.
Yeah.
So is there some kind of outreach that you're doing to find crossing guards? I know that's a problem really around the country in a sense. Is there some kind of initiative you're working with, like for seniors? I know they have to have what CDL driver or do they?
No, not for crossing guards.
Not for crossing guards.
Yeah, yeah. It's okay.
Can you send us, can you send us a brief written narrative of all of your recruitment efforts regarding security guards with special attention to members of the community that are senior citizens? Does that cover your request, Madam Vice President?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. I'm sure, I had to step out for a long time for the planning commission hearing, so forgive me for having stepped out. I'm sure that lots of discussion was had about the timing of traffic signals for vehicles and the operation of traffic signals for vehicles. But there are multiple pedestrian signals non-functioning in the city that have been identified in 3-1-1 for over a year. Others have been destroyed in crashes and gone un-repaired. When repairs do occur, the signals are regularly being set on pedestrian actuation, meaning that they don't do anything unless somebody is pressing a beg button. This is inconsistent with complete streets guidance. And meanwhile, car signals that go dark are repaired in hours. This prioritization of them without prioritizing the repair of pedestrian signals is also inconsistent with complete streets guidance. In January of 2022, DOT was provided a photographed and geo-tagged list of problem signals all around, along all trails and separated bike lane infrastructure at the request of BC DOT and for priority repair and adjustment. And to my knowledge, none of those repairs have been made to this date. What is the explanation for this prioritization and the lack of repairs?
So part of the signal aspects and timing and things like that is going to be incorporated into our traffic signal optimization project. So complete streets is woven into that contract. And as the, as they go through and do their analysis and implement the new timing, then those considerations are going to be made. So if there's locations where it should be automatic pedestrian signals, then those are going to be factored into there. But that, it's, it's not so much a thing of the pedestrian signals not being prioritized. I think it's just more of the nature of the work and, and then also doing this, this data collection analysis process. So we are working on making those improvements in that area.
I'm just utterly dissatisfied with that as an answer because the, because there are so many vehicle traffic signals that get repaired on a regular and rapid basis. And to not repair pedestrian signals is a clear, is clearly not in keeping with our complete streets hierarchy of, of needs and priorities. I'm just totally dissatisfied with this as an answer because, because these are specific signals around bikeways that we're talking about where just data collection would seem utterly secondary to a basic understanding of needs of, of street typology and user typology along bikeways, specific areas, priority bike, bikeway, specific areas. I mean, we have 1,600 or 2,400 miles of streets in this city and less than 1% of them have bikeways on them. It would seem utterly reasonable to just have a standard approach for prioritizing pedestrian safety and the, the way that we specifically actuate pedestrian signals in those very, very few areas where we actually have cycling infrastructure in the city. So I just can't accept the idea that there is, there's some arduous process that needs to be undertaken in order to decide to make things safer in, in such cases. I, I only have one other question, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any other questions before we go back to Councilman Dorsey? Conway?
I got a bunch. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is brief. Another issue that I see very frequently up in northern northeast, particularly northeast, is commercial vehicles, parking in neighborhoods. We deal with it all the time. I'm sure you guys get all our requests. What are we doing to make sure that we hold those folks accountable? Is there any sort of coordinated effort in, yeah, it's really frustrating?
Yeah, so that, that also falls in like with our other inspection of, of vehicles and parking violations. And so we're inspecting them, we're citing them. And I don't know if you were here earlier when we were talking about, but, you know, we, we do also have some contractual mechanisms to, if they're there long-term, to then work on trying to tow them as well. So we do have enforcement, so if there's particular ones that you're aware of that maybe you think maybe haven't been addressed, shoot them over to us and, and we can get our, our safety team out there to inspect. Anything else, Liam?
Yeah, and I know, we talked actually to Lieutenant Christian about this earlier this morning. One of the things we're going to clarify after a budget cycle is talking about take-home vehicles. Because that was something that we were asked to take a look, a deeper dive into. Because we have residents who, like it's their primary, primary car and they live at their home. And it's like a perk of work, but because there's like an advertisement on the side, it gets reported as a commercial vehicle. So that's something we have to tighten up. It's something we're committed to looking at further.
I appreciate it. This is more particularly around 18-wheelers.
Oh, that's very clear. Okay, that's a clear one then.
Thank you. Anything we can do to address that or stay on top of it is super helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the conduit and basically for everything else, we don't, we still don't have enough. Or are you going to be staffing up to do more inspectors for all the street cuts? Particularly because we'll have more for the conduit work, but also just in general. I know that that has been an issue in terms of dealing with, making sure that the, the restoration work is done in the right way.
Got it.
What's the plan to staff up there?
So yeah, sorry, I had to pause for a minute. So we can, again, we can look at that. I don't know that we, at this point, had a, have a plan to say of staffing up, increasing the staff there. That's something that, recognizing this is my, also my first year really fully owning the budget cycle and because of when different budget requests and things like that would have had to have gone in, I need to kind of dig into things a little bit more before just, you know, going through there and, and saying, hey, here's a request. And that also kind of goes online with looking at those vacancies. And so if we have had those long vacancies and I can't seem to get them filled, then looking at them and saying, well, can we use this position? Can we reclassify and use it in a different area potentially? So I'm trying to look and see if there's opportunities for that. And then gainfully filling those positions and then being able to help in other areas. So that's kind of been ingrained in me in my process of trying to see what we can work with internal before just asking for additional. So I want to make sure if you're requesting some additional funding for additional positions, we're doing it, knowing that we vetted all other, all other options. So I definitely see that there is a need to, to beef up that team. And again, it helps with the enforcement, it also, because of the fines, it generates revenue as well, so.
Yeah, you generated lots of revenue for my district this past year. And so, but I think, you know, part of that though was, you know, residents and myself being proactive. So obviously you're going to be reactive to 3-1-1s and stuff for a while. But, you know, having, again, following up on, you know, whoever's doing the work and making sure it's properly restored. I still have half of a crosswalk on 30 second.
Councilwoman, is there a follow-up?
Yep, 30-second old York Road.
The department has had a lot of turnover. Is leadership here aware of any other people's intentions to leave the department in the near enough future? Has anybody here expressed to the department plans to leave the department imminently?
So there, we, we are aware of, of course, there are some people up for retirement as that happens. There, there are some others that I'm aware of that are potentially looking at leaving. But again, it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily representative of any type of issues or anything. It's just that potential opportunities present themselves as well. So, but yeah, there's, there's going to be some more turnover.
But so we, we do know that some people are planning to leave the department at this point?
Yes.
And are we anticipating how this is going to affect our ability to maintain capacity and continuity of work?
We are discussing and coming up with succession plans for that.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions?
One more, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
My last question here, you guys were working on a north-south transit corridor study. Was curious what the latest and greatest is on that and even more particularly what we can do to implement that study. This is the Yorke Corridor.
Sorry, I'm not as up to speed on that offhand.
All good.
So Councilman, the, the study itself is becoming part of the overall north-south study that MTA has embarked upon. We, as a transportation agency, have provided a set of recommendations to this, of, well, recommendation as part of comments from the study that we are compiling to provide to the, let's say, the chain of command. So once that is complete within the transportation world, that would be sent over to MTA as a way of moving forward with the actual study. And I'm saying this in light of the fact that we don't really control their timing for the study. Remember, they have presented seven alternatives and they did the same thing for the east-west connector.
There were two studies. There was a city study.
That's correct.
And then there was a state study.
Correct.
I'm curious for the city study, we were, we completed that.
That is correct. It's, it's been completed.
And you're saying now it's been looped into, to inform the state study?
That's correct.
Got it. I would love as a follow-up and just so, you know, we're all getting ready for lunch, a follow-up what our thoughts are on funding said study, knowing that we have infrastructure funds coming out. I want to make sure that we're prepared to take advantage of that as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dorsey.
What will it cost to add an overnight parking enforcement shift to the safety division?
Love that question.
Okay, well, we'll have to crunch the numbers and get back to you all.
When do you think we could get an answer on that?
Yeah. Do you know about how long?
Well, just to clarify, by overnight, what, what hours are you referring to?
There's a law that prohibits commercial vehicles, any commercial vehicles, from being parked anywhere on any street in the city.
Councilman, which hours? Which hours?
1:00 AM to 7:00 AM.
Perfect. Current parking enforcement ends at 11:00 PM, which means the crews are off the streets by 10:15. You're aware of that? You still want 1:00 AM to 7:00 AM?
We have a law that only applies during the hours of 1:00 to 7:00 AM and no one else to enforce it.
I wasn't asking that. I just asked if you wanted 1:00 to 7:00, that's what you'll get. I just, I'm just checking, not trying to be rude. 1:00 to 7:00 AM. Councilman Dorsey, back to you.
Yeah, I'd like that by the end of business on Tuesday, Mr. Chair.
Sounds good to me.
Can we, yeah, I was going to say, can we have at least a week, please?
For, I got to push back on that. For the, the, the cost of staffing and overnight?
Well, is it, so is, so is the staffing, do we need additional vehicles? Do we, I don't, what else do we have? Okay. Okay. Okay, if Tuesday, if Tuesday, if, if Monday, Tuesday is good, then, okay.
Okay.
All right. Got it.
I made this request known to the administration more than a month ago. I want to know the answer before I have an op, before I'm asked to vote on this budget.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions?
No.
Director, you and your team. Liam, thank you for answering our emails and our phone calls 24/7 throughout the entire year. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate it. You truly are a consummate public servant, Director. You're very lucky to have Liam Davis working on your team. Kendall, thank you for a half dozen times per day, 365 days out of the year, making me and all of my colleagues look amazing in front of our constituents. We can't tell you how much we appreciate you and the entire team. And to everyone else, thank you. We're now in recess. We'll be back in session at 6:00 PM sharp for Enoch Pratt Free Library System. Thank you.